So you sold your convertible mind to the same one, are we?
No, we're just friends.
You've got a good deal on it. He went to North Carolina. No, that's true. It's like a brand new car. He's only got twenty-five thousand.
We could call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting on Monday, August 20, 2012. It is just past 7:30 PM. We are in Riverside Township Hall, Room 427 Riverside Road. Welcome. Residents and visitors are welcome to all meetings of the village board. Comments and suggestions on any topic are welcome at any regular meeting. Comments may be made during the time identified for public comment on the agenda or if the comments pertain to an agenda item at the time that item comes up for discussion. Individuals who wish to comment must be recognized by the president and then speak at the podium and should begin by identifying themselves by name and address so that our village clerk can add this information to the meeting minutes. So again, welcome everyone who is here with us this evening, those watching at home on Riverside Cable, Channel 6, and to those who pick up the DVD at the library or otherwise watch our meetings by picking up the internet broadcast that will be on our website in the weeks ahead. So with that, today, serving as our village clerk is Kathy Haley. As our village clerk, Arlene Blaha is not here today, so I will ask Kathy to please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman, here.
Trustee Salz.
Here.
Trustee Reynolds.
Here.
Trustee Shavitz.
Here.
Trustee Sachi.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Also present, oh, President Gorman.
Here.
Also present, Village Manager Peter Scolera and Village Attorney Michael Mars.
Thank you. So we have a quorum, so we shall proceed. If you would please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance, I will ask trustee Sachi if he would please lead us in a pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And first up this evening is a presentation by Officer Brian Greenwald on the Police Explorer Conference which he just attended. Chief Weitzel is also going to step up with us. Thank you.
President Gorman and Board of Trustees, it's my honor to have Brian Greenwald come up and brief the board on their Explorer Conference which was held in Colorado, the national conference, and Doug Robertson is with Brian because once again Doug received a national award at the conference. So I'm going to turn it over to Officer Greenwald and he can brief the board, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask Brian.
Thanks, Chief. From July 16th to July 23rd, we had the fortunate opportunity to travel to Fort Collins, Colorado, in the campus of Colorado State University and attend the National Law Enforcement Exploring Conference. This conference is held every other year. It's for explorers from across the United States. I believe there's another, there was a post there for Canada for the first time, which was a good experience. It's run by different federal agencies each conference. This year was by the Drug Enforcement Agency. Our explorers had a chance to compete in competition, both team and individual, and we were fortunate enough that we had Doug get second place in the rapid-fire nine-millimeter competition out of over 600 shooters. So it's quite an accomplishment. This is the second conference in a row that Doug has won a marksmanship award, so it's something we're very proud of. It was a great trip. They did very well in team competition. They missed a trophy by just a couple of points on two different competitions. They learned a lot. There were seminars taught by members of the US Marshals and Drug Enforcement Agency and different groups. So the explorers learned a lot. Everybody had a really good time. It's a long drive to Colorado, but we got through it, and overall it was a great experience for myself and definitely for all the explorers. I've heard nothing but positive feedback. So, again, it's, we're fortunate that we're able to do these things. There were, I think, about 2,600 police explorers there, so, you know, it's a great chance for the explorers to network, meet explorers from other states, and learn as much as they can about law enforcement before they decide to make it a career.
Could you tell us about some of the other competitions?
Sure. Throughout the year, we train on a variety of different law enforcement disciplines. This year, for our team competitions, we, it's a random selection process. Our teams had Arrest and Search, Burglary in Progress, Traffic Accident Investigation, Crime Prevention.
Emergency First Aid.
And, yeah, and Emergency First Aid. So they're competing against all the other posts, and again, we just narrowly missed trophies in two of the events, so hopefully in 2014, wherever that may be, we'll be able to come home with a trophy from the team competition.
And how many attendees would you estimate?
About 2,600.
Wow.
So it's, yeah, it's a very big, it's a very big program. It's sponsored by Learning for Life, which is a division of the Boy Scouts, so they handle all that, all the insurance and stuff like that's all handled through the Boy Scouts, which is really nice. Overall, a very good trip. Colorado State's a beautiful campus. The kids loved it, so I think overall it was just a great trip.
Why don't you give Doug, Doug Robertson, an opportunity to step up for a moment and tell us how is it that you were so successful two years ago?
I don't know. Preparation, I think. Having your head in the right place, I think, is a big part of it. Before the competition, you know, I pictured what it'd feel like to be there. I, you know, I practiced without a gun. The other explorers thought I was crazy because, you know, I'm out there in the room like this, but, no, picture yourself in the moment before you're there. I mean, you already played through what it's going to feel like, so you know what you need to do. It's not a surprise. So I, once I got up there to actually shoot, I already felt like I was there. So, I mean, that took away a lot of the unknowns that maybe some of the other guys would have had to deal with because I already felt, I already saw what the targets would look like, what the sites would look like, and I think that helped the most for me.
Well, Doug, thank you. You certainly did yourself proud in the Village of Riverside, Riverside Police Department, and particularly Officer Greenwald. I'm sure you made him proud for all your hard work also.
Yeah.
And the rest of the explorers also.
Yeah. Can't say enough good things about Brian. He does, goes above and beyond the call of duty for the posts. I mean, I don't want to talk him up too much, but anything we need, I mean, the explorers' program in Riverside, as far as me, I want to pursue law enforcement. It's been an amazing thing because if I need anything, any question I have in regards to law enforcement, future career plans, anything, I just ask him directly. I mean, text him, call him, and he's always there for us. So as far as that goes, having someone in law enforcement like that to guide you along the way, I think, is invaluable.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Chief Weitzel and Officer Greenwald and the explorers. I mean, you guys step up and help the village in a lot of circumstances when we have community events and so forth, and it's very important to us, so thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Doug, good job.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the company. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, we shall move on. Is there, to the public comment section of the meeting, is there anybody who care to address the board at this point in time?
Donald Spatney, one of eleven Woodside. I have just four tiny, small things here. The first one is, I don't know if the village has ever entertained the idea of stenciling house numbers on the curbs. This may sound strange, but the other night I encountered a cab driver down on Selborn, and the guy, it was dark, I was out with my dog, driving her around, and the guy was wandering looking for house numbers. Frankly, I tried to help him, and I did finally find it, but it's very difficult, as you probably know. There isn't much light, and so I brought along a couple samples of, you know, the numbers on the curb, right? And I'll send those in. You guys might think about it. Maybe somebody doesn't want it, I don't know, but just something to do. The second thing is, I'd like to propose that the village enter, or attempt to enter into a, in other words, write a pitch to Bayer and the other company that makes the stuff to protect the ash trees. We could pitch the National Historic Landscape District of Riverside for a ten-year living lab program. They provide the chemicals we organize people to install them. You don't have to be licensed to spill it on the tree, on the ground or on the tree. You do have to be licensed to do the injection. I copied some articles about this from places in several states, which I'm going to give you, and it seems like it's been effective in many places. Some places say they have 90% effectiveness. Some people say less. They're treating 16,000 trees in Naperville, and they have been at it since 2008, and they write about having very good success. Well, I know we can't afford it, but it turns out that, you know, I'm struck every morning when I hear the chainsaws go off, and there's been some magnificent trees around town lately that rightly or wrongly have been cut, and I just think maybe we should investigate this. It's about a third of the cost of cutting a tree to treat the tree. Now, how long it lasts and all that, you can add nauseam on the web. So I'm going to give you these things, but why don't we pitch this to Bayer? I mean, they've got advertising money, and they've got, you know, it's a gigantic international firm that makes, you know, aspirin, synthesized heroin, and maybe they would go for something like this. And if we had a ten-year program where we did X number of trees per year and documented it, we have all these ash trees on the GPS system, it'd be something besides just hauling out the chainsaw and taking them down. So I'm going to chip these in for the village manager, maybe, you know, the Olmstead Society, the Landscape Commission, anybody else. I'd be happy to chip in some ideas, and the village, write to Bayer and Advent as an event or something is the other company that makes it, and pitch them. Now, I know we got a little pilot program up in Indian Gardens, but nevertheless, you know, I'm talking about signing these guys up for like a long-term deal because I think you have to do this every two years. That's what I get out of this, the kind that you spill around the smaller trees. But, you know, we're surrounded by forest preserves, and they're going to be full of ash trees, so, you know, no matter what we do here, we're still under the control of our surrounding area. So I think rather than cut all the trees down, maybe we could, we could pitch them and try it. You know, they might go for it. Olmstead, National Historic Landscape District, so it's a good story, and it would make nice, I could envision their advertising on television saying Bayer is demonstrating this project all over the world, right? It's only a little chemical for them, probably costs them 30 cents a gallon to make it, right? Okay, so maybe you'll entertain that idea. The third one is the co-op tree program. Is there one this year? No. Okay, well, if you get one, I will pay the fee for a tree at 78 Nut All, my girlfriend's old house, where the guy lost three trees there in the parkway, and he really wants to get a tree there. And I'll pay for one in front of Hauser because we just cut down another beautiful tree in Hauser. Now, I think a lot of these trees are flagging at the top because of the lack of money. I mean, not lack of money, lack of water. I'm thinking about the money already. I can do two trees anyway, but I'll do one for Hauser and one for this guy on 78 Nut All. And, so, you know, if we can do the 50/50 program, so maybe you can find 500 bucks and I'll give you 500 bucks, okay?
Doug, you might want to introduce yourself pretty well.
Hi.
I'm doing the project.
Huh?
Exactly what you'd say.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Well, you mean the ash borer?
Planting new trees.
Oh, planting new trees, yeah. We should, if, I read this article, it says we're going to knock down 100 trees this year, and these are major trees, you know. We ought to be planting 150 or 200 then, right? So, you know, we're just falling behind, and the place is getting, some of these streets up in the north end look really bare. I mean, you know, I don't know if the people don't want trees in front of their house or what the story is. My last point, to make this very brief, is the 1908 dam. The little sediment that wasn't there now turns out to be there. It's really awful gunk. Anybody can go see it. They have no concept of what they're doing. They told us, the project manager spoke in the paper and said he has no idea what the loss of the 1908 dam will do to the effects upriver. I can tell you because I studied the USGS report, which probably he didn't, and for every foot they dropped that, you're going to lose three inches on maple wood. They're already down two feet, and the dam is four to seven feet of water behind it, depending on whose guesstimate you're looking at. Once that dam's removed, it's going to scour that sediment all the way back up that river at high-flow times. It's going to shove that sediment into those boulders. All those weeds and crap are going to grow there, and nobody's going to be able to maintain it, but mainly, it's holding right now, the water, it isn't a total disaster. You know, we've only lost about 50% of the water that we're going to lose in this project at low flow. We're at about 50% of the drop, not the whole drop, and the river up there today, my friends, is 18 to 20 feet wide. 18 to 20 feet wide where it was 300 feet. Remember when I came here and I said 40 feet, it's going to be narrowest and all this, and everybody scoffed at me? You know, they scoffed at me that there was a dam there, and Richard Ray, who told you. Well, now this has happened, and if you slope this thing from the top of where it is right now, from the remnants which have held up marvelously for 60 years underwater, then you would have some capture of water back. What's going to happen if you drop this four to seven feet is, you know, we can all hold hands and jump across over there behind the gas station. And up around Salt Creek and those places, you can see far out into the river, the water is only this deep. So if you lose three inches on maple wood for every foot you lose at the dam, and that's what it's going to be, then you're going to have a vast narrowing of the river into a very narrow channel. That is, there's a deeper channel there, and that water's just going to run down the middle like a little stream, and we can call this place Creekside, and the police can take that dam patch off and put just a little squeal on there. Because, you know, this was a place that had this historic heritage for 185 years, and now it's being ripped out. So, once again, I'm here to say it isn't too late to save something, and you should really demand to have an outcome study of what will happen if the 1908 dam remnants are removed. And I know you guys never request this, and I know you never get it, but I mean, you really ought to do this because there's no rush to do that, just as there was no rush to cut those trees this year. We could have seen what the wall repair would have done, but no one ever listens to me. So this is going to happen within days, and there's, if a guy can't tell you what the river's going to be like, he shouldn't be allowed to do something. And this is all seven of you. This isn't two. This is every one of you. None of you has ever spoken out against any aspect of this dam or said, wait, stop. We had the chance down at Clem's, they said, if you say, tell us not to do it, we'll stop and go away. We should have done that. Anybody with any eyes in their mind that would go down there to the bridge today and look at this thing would see what a catastrophe it is. It's ugly, it's just awful, and I mean, there's a lot of people that think this, not just me. So please, don't let them take out the 1908 dam remnants. Let them come back. They waited, we had to wait a year for these guys, remember? They were going to start, they made us wait a year? Well, let them come back. They got three-year easements, they can just leave their thing in place. I walked out there on that road to where it's narrow, and I can tell you, if you take out the 1908 dam, you're going to lose half that width of that narrow space right there by the height, by the depth, and that means you're going to have a 10-foot river. A 10-foot river. And the other thing is, don't tell everybody that this is a drought season. If you look at the USGS site, there's a little line of triangles that goes across the gauge, and we are up, above, and below, and above, and below. We're right through the 67-year average for this date. So this is not an abnormal condition. We will have this condition every year, and if you take two more feet out of maple wood, you're going to have that narrowing way upriver. Don't forget, this impounded water, it's still holding some water all the way to Lake Street. So this is going to affect all of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spatney, for your points with respect to addresses on houses and the trees and parkway trees. Mr. Village Manager, Village Manager Scolera will take those under consideration, and of course, thank you for your personal opinions regarding the dam. Village Manager Scolera and Trustee Sachi and Reynolds will, of course, take those under consideration as they continue to meet with the Corps and the Army and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, so thank you. Is there anybody else who cares to address the board?
Mr. Cresswell? Yeah, I have, I invited Peter Poutikakis from Riverside Foods to come tonight, and he's going to tell us about, now that we're on TV twice a day, I thought it was time to have product placement. And our first one tonight is Riverside Cream Soda, and Peter's going to tell us about the origins of Riverside Cream Soda.
Good evening. Peter Poutikakis from Riverside Foods Grocery Store at 48 East Burlington, and I just wanted to take a minute or two of your time to introduce Refreshing Riverside, which is kind of a fun little bottled cream soda that we partnered up with Filbert's Soda in Chicago to make for Riverside. It's a clear cream soda, uses 100% cane sugar, and it has a fun little label, and I'll pass them out and tell you a little bit about it really quickly. But the story kind of began with having Filbert's Soda in our store. We really enjoy having local products and promoting them the best that we can, from things from Filbert's in Chicago to local products in Riverside, like Chocolate Twists and everything in between. So we would constantly, they're really well-known for their root beer, which is kind of their flagship, and it's an old-time root beer that's really, really good. So we would constantly joke that, with the vendor Ron Bazooka, that, you know, we should do something for Riverside, we should do something fun. And that all kind of came together when we met a local designer from here in town, a gentleman by the name of Don Pagani. He has a company named Sticky Worldwide, and we kind of shared a similar passion for Filbert's. So we all got together, the three of us, and said, well, what can we do? Don came up with a fantastic label, and it has a drawing from a commissioned inventory report from the late 1800s that the village had done, and then, so we kind of took, and the color scheme is just something more playful, something to be a little bit more summery. So when you think of cream soda when you're younger, maybe the cream soda popsicles and things like that. So we came together and made this cream soda, and we had a lot of fun doing it, and it's, this is the type of things we'd like to do more in the community, things like this, and promoting local products, having fun beer and wine tastings, and participating in the farmers' markets and other fun, you know, community events and stuff like that. So we really enjoyed that, and I just want to say thank you, and we're really proud of, you know, being in the village here, and I'd like to give you guys a bottle of cream soda to take home.
I told Peter I was bringing a bottle, and I knew Jimmy would drink one, so he brought us all one. And Jim and Lonnie, I just want to point out, on the side is a photograph of Frederick Olmstead.
Thank you. That's great.
I'm glad it's got a picture of the dam.
Peter, thank you very much, and thank you to your family. Riverside Foods is obviously very important to the Village of Riverside, and you continue to step up as an important member in the community. This is fantastic. When I, you have a nice display of this currently in your store. When I brought a bottle home this week and showed it to my wife, she said, well, I saw that, and I said, well, why didn't you buy some? So, I mean, it's great. I mean, it's the kind of thing where it brings a smile to your face, you have guests over at your house. What better thing? We're always proud of where we live. Well, these are great things, so thank you, thank you to your whole family, and thank you to Riverside Foods.
And Peter, before you go, I actually had a question for you. You're now, you're managing the store?
Yes, along with my uncle Jerry Garvis.
So what generation now?
Third generation.
Third generation.
It was my grandfather, and then my uncle and my mother Stephanie, and then now it's my uncle and I. So that'd be third generation, and obviously we get help from my brothers and my uncle's children and stuff, so we definitely, yeah, third generation is.
And Peter's being modest. I mean, his input is already obvious at the store. I mean, anybody who hasn't been into Riverside Foods lately, go check it out. They have new products, new displays. It's a great place to shop.
Thank you. Oh, and you know what? I did forget to say, the Refreshing Riverside, kind of, the idea came up was, the one thing we all shared was that, actually, the term that came up was Riverside is like a fresh breath of air. When you come in with the landscape and kind of the romantic layout of the streets and all that, it's very different from what surrounds us, so it's that fresh breath, that refreshing kind of idea that came out through the whole label process, so that was one, too.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's good.
Anybody else care to address the board at this point?
Hi, my name's Amanda Manson. I'm a member of Riverside Junior Women's Charity, and I'm here tonight to talk about the Holler and Hoot and Annie Hoedown that we're having at the Riverside Swim Club on September 8th. We're really excited for the event. We're going to have a line caller, a band, lots of fun activities for both adults and children, and what we're envisioning it to be is kind of a throwback of days gone by when things are a little bit slower and time spent with family and friends. So what we're doing is, we're really trying to involve both the organizations that our charity has worked with, both for-profit and nonprofit, making it a large community event. We have businesses from the city and La Grange and Berwyn, and then also, obviously, Riverside. So we're really excited for the event, and again, that's September 8th, from 5 to 9 in the Riverside Swim Club parking lot. I know tonight we're going to also talk about the events application, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Maybe you might stick around. Your item comes up fairly early in the agenda in case we have any questions, so thank you.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Is there anybody else at this point? If not, we shall move on. Next up, a report to village officers, village presidents' report. Since our last board meeting on July 17th, I attended the American Planning Association meeting in downtown Chicago where the topic was the legacy of planning in Merrimont, Ohio and Riverside, Illinois. It was fun to sit in the audience and hear the planners talk about the influence of Riverside and Olmstead. Merrimont was designed in 1921 by John Nolan, who took up many of Olmstead's ideas. As we know, our community was designed around the railroad station in the time of horse and buggy. This village was designed in 1921 to cater to, is one of the first planned communities that dealt with automobile transportation and getting in and out. So it's a very interesting, interesting session. On July 24th, I attended the signing ceremony at the Illinois Crime Lab for House Bill 4081, along with Riverside Police Chief Tom Weitzel and Representative Michael Zaleski. That was the bill which streamlines the process for gathering evidence during drug investigations was signed into the law by the governor on July 24th. Police Chief Weitzel has worked on that legislation for more than a decade. We were very proud to work with him through the West Central Municipal Conference and through Representative Zaleski to get this bill through both the House and the Senate. It was no small matter, and I was very proud to stand with him when the governor signed the bill. It was quite an impressive gathering of law enforcement officers at that event, so thank you, chief. On July 25th, I attended the Metropolitan Planning Council Annual Luncheon, and that was called "The Cities That Work," and it was quite an interesting event. There were about 750 people there downtown, and it was a gathering where the speakers were Mayor Emanuel, Gary Mayor, Karen Freeman-Wilson, and Milwaukee Mayor Tom Barrett, and the purpose of the discussion was to focus on the need for regional collaboration between all of our major cities along this portion of Lake Michigan. Quite an interesting little play on words. The session was called "The Cities That Work," and the subtext to it was, "The nation is a network of cities with complex infrastructure, politics, and constituencies that require leadership, vision, and an immense amount of work." So it was a real interesting discussion. The only problem is, Mayor Emanuel didn't show up, but it was fun. speakers were Mayor Emanuel, Gary Mayor, Karen Freeman Wilson, and Milwaukee Mayor Tom Barrett. And the purpose of the discussion was to focus on the need for regional collaboration between all of our major cities along this portion of Lake Michigan. Quite an interesting little play on words. The session was called "The Cities That Work," and the subtext to it was, "The nation is a network of cities with complex infrastructure, politics, and constituencies that require leadership, vision, and an immense amount of work." So, it was a real interesting discussion. The only problem is Mayor Emanuel didn't show up. But it was fun to listen to Mayor Wilson and Mayor Barrett. On July 27th, I attended Cook County Commissioner Jeff Tobolski's Veterans Event held in McCook. Commissioner Tobolski is also the mayor of McCook. This event was held at the MAX on 47th Street. There were a couple of hundred veterans present for this very nice ceremony that he holds to honor the veterans. A number of elected officials and other folks were there. So, it was a very good opportunity to shake hands and network with those people who are real important to our heritage. On August 2nd, I attended the Illinois Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Annual Breakfast and Business Expo at Navy Pier. Quite an interesting event. It was about a two-hour program with speakers from various segments of the business community in Chicago, and Mayor Emanuel. And he was there at this one. So, it was good to hear him speak. We then toured through the business expo. I turned to our Chamber of Commerce and asked them to send a representative along with me, to have them come along and listen. So, Alex Galigos attended with me. So, that was a good experience. And then, on August 18th, which was this Saturday, it was Fred Day in Riverside. And with that, I'm gonna turn to Trustee Shavitz here, who is a member of the Fred Committee. But before I do that, let me just comment on the Fred Weekend and all the activities that started back in April of this year with Frederick Olmsted's birthday and the planters on parade. Fantastic event, beautiful day on Saturday. Everybody had smiles on their faces. People from all over, from suburbs all around Chicago, a few people from out of state. It was exactly the type of thing you want to showcase the village. This type of event does not happen without a lot of volunteers, and there were a lot of people that really stepped up. However, it takes a core group, and that was the Fred Committee, who started this project about 18 months ago. And we've mentioned them on a number of occasions here, and the Fred Committee was four of our residents, Tom Lupfer, Kathy Maloney, Harjit Singh, and Trustee Shavitz. So, I want to specifically thank the four of them. They, of course, deflect the accolades to all the other volunteers, but it took their dedication and perseverance over the past 18 months. So, Trustee Shavitz, do you want to tell us a little bit about that event?
Yeah, absolutely. It was, first of all, we got so lucky with the weather, because it was a gorgeous day on Saturday. So, we had great turnout. We had 85 registrants ahead of time, and then we had about 15 to 20 walk-ups. So, we had a great turnout, better than the committee expected. As Mike said, we had a lot, over half our registrants were from outside of Riverside. So, that was great. And sometimes we forget, when we live in Riverside, how special this community is to people who don't live here as well. So, it was great to see people from all over the western suburbs, a couple of people from northern suburbs, a couple of people from Michigan came, which was mind-blowing to me as well. So...
And that list does not include all the presenters?
Right. We had a terrific amount of presenters, too, and it was nice. Everybody walked out of the presentations with big smiles on their faces. Everybody, the comic cards that we've received back have all been very positive. The other thing that we did was we also announced the winner of the Gateway Design Competition here. So, we, for those of you who may or may not know, we had five landscape architects come into the village and design a possible gateway entrance for First Avenue and Forest Avenue by the high school. And so, we had five submissions. We had five voting entities on this. And we'd always, the Fred Committee had always said ahead of time, if there was a tie, that the general public vote would be the winning vote. So, we actually, of course, we had four professional organizations and one general public vote. Four organizations, of course, voted for four different designs. So, which just actually speaks to the merit that all these designs had. So, the general public vote was the one that was the deciding vote, and this was the winning vote. It was from Krogstad Design out of Crystal Lake. And anybody who's at the library that kind of saw the presentation about it and knows a little bit about it, there's some really just neat aspects to it. I encourage everybody to check it out online. And then I also brought for any of the trustees or general public, yeah, I'll pass this around.
And Carl Krogstad was there to accept the award. And you talk to these, any of the landscape architects or the professionals, and they're just so excited to have an opportunity to do something in this village. Everybody wants to get their hands on Olmsted's landscape. So, Mr. Krogstad was very excited to be the winner.
So, great day, and people are already asking about next year, and we hope to continue to grow this. And Peter, thanks for showing up and lending a hand, and thanks to everybody else who helped out. The other person I would be remiss for not mentioning is Liz Peters, who's Economic Development Commission Commissioner. And she was instrumental in bringing together that entryway, Gateway Design Competition as well. So, I want to thank her for all her hard work and support. Thanks.
Thank you. And that concludes my report. Village Manager Scolera?
I will be quick. My first item is just a quick update on the Hoffman Dam. Work does continue with sediment removal and removal of the remaining legacy dams to follow. The invasive species along the riverbank and trees located within the grading area of Swan Pond have also been removed. And the next step for that work is ComEd to come back and complete their connection of the new wire that is running across the pond area. If you've been by Burlington Street, you probably have noticed that the parking lot is nearing completion. The contractor will begin placement of the brick pavers this week, and we are hoping that the lot will be ready by early next week. Most of the landscape plants have also been planted at this time. I want to recognize Public Works for their efforts during the recent water main break repairs at the intersection of Selborn in York and Long Common in Evelyn. While out there repairing the Long Common and Evelyn break, a second excavation was needed that was completed last week to replace a pipe that was found to be in poor condition, which had water weeping through the pipe wall. But Ed and his crew did a great job in tackling the repair and minimizing the amount of time that people had no water service. A reminder to the community that the next step of CMAP's Downtown Plan will be a visioning workshop to be held in the auditorium upstairs on Wednesday, September 5th. All attendees will have an opportunity to share their ideas and collectively create a long-term vision for Riverside's downtown meeting, downtown. I encourage you to visit the village website for more details. Having the public present at this meeting will be essential to the process. And finally, I am sad to report that Village Clerk Arlene Blaha, who was not feeling well this evening, and so Kathy is helping by filling in for her, has informed me the other day that she will be retiring effective September 28th. Arlene has served as village clerk since 2006, and our September meeting will be her last, and we will miss her. We're trying to convince her to still stick around and sing the National Anthem for the Fourth of July. So, that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Peter. Village Attorney Report, Michael Mars.
I have no report tonight, Mr. Spatney.
Thank you. Moving on, we shall move to the approval of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening is the ratification of the Bills of August 1st, 2012, approval of Bills of August 2012, approved Village Board of Trustees Executive Session Meeting Minutes of July 19th, excuse me, July 16th, 2012, approved Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes of July 16, and file and review Board of Fire and Police Commissioner Meeting Minutes of May 22nd, 2012. Does any trustee require any item to be removed for discussion?
I do have a correction that was given to me by Trustee Ballereen to the, I'm sorry, the regular July 16 meeting minutes. It's a request for an addition to Item 7A1, Presentation of 2011 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And the following language should be added. "Trustee Ballereen raised the question to Mr. Berg, 'What options are available to the Board to identify the recreation assignment in the CAFR? In prior fiscal years, the surplus has been tracked but not assigned. An assignment is at the designation of the Finance Director. The Finance Director receives policy guidance from the Board. In effect, the Board decides an assignment. The Board can instruct the Finance Director to assign the surplus in future CAFRs or adopt an ordinance. An assignment would not require any additional Board action. An ordinance would require formal approval.' Dan Berg said that you could provide the general framework for such an ordinance. However, very few communities adopt such an ordinance and usually make it an assignment. The Board agreed that the recreation assignment should be called out and identified under 'assigned.'" And if the Board is okay with my recollection of that, that is the suggested amendment to the minutes.
So, with those minutes amended, does any trustee require any item to be removed? If not, I will ask for a motion in a second on the consent agenda.
So moved.
So, motion by trustee Sussman, second by trustee Reynolds. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sussman, aye.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds?
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz?
Aye.
Trustee Satchy?
Aye.
Trustee Ballereen?
Aye.
Thank you. And that motion is adopted. Moving on to Item 8, Reports of Board Chairpersons. First up, Public Relations, Economic Development, and Open Government, trustee Shavitz.
Sure. And I'm just gonna take these a little out of order, because I see we have two out of the three special event application folks here. So, I'll start with Item 8A2, the special event application submitted by Riverside Junior Women's Charity for their Holler and Hoot Nanny Hoedown, to be held on Saturday, September 8th, 2012. And do you have anything else you wanted to add before we...
No, thanks.
Sal, you gave a good description. I don't think I can help you.
Oh, thanks.
As we heard during public comment, the Riverside Junior Women's Charity is organized in order to improve the quality of life in the Riverside community and the surrounding area by identifying the human needs of its residents, promoting those needs, and encouraging charitable support within the community to meet those needs. The organization is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. Each year, the active members of the Riverside Junior Women's Charity vote to support a list of organizations with charitable contributions to assist their continued efforts to serve the local community, women and children, and the needy with their services. During the 2011-2012 fiscal year, RJWC made donations to local causes totaling $12,470. The Holler and Hoot Nanny Hoedown, easy for you to say, is the big fall fundraiser for the RJWC. The event will be held entirely upon private property in the parking lot of the Riverside Swim Club, and will be an evening of family fun with a pie baking contest, award-winning barbecue, live music, traditional carnival games, and friendly competitions for both adults and children. RJWC has teamed with the Riverside Chamber of Commerce to host this event. No village services are required. May I ask, Peter, if there are no village services required? Is there a need for a special event application?
Only because it is an event that will impact parking in and around that area.
Okay, fair enough. So, with that, I will make a motion to approve the special event application for the Holler and Hoot Nanny Hoedown, sponsored by the Riverside Junior Women's Charity, to be held on Saturday, September 8th, 2012, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the parking lot of the Riverside Swim Club.
Second.
So, we have a motion by trustee Shavitz, second by trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion? I have just one question for information. Amanda, if you could, what's scheduled, you have a site map here, site plan in the parking lot of Riverside Swim Club. What's taking place in the tents or the booths that are stretching along?
There's going to be a variety of activities. Majority of them will be children's activities, face painting, scarecrow decorating, along with things like duck ponds. But like I said, children's activities. There also will be a tug-of-war event for both adults, and then another one for children. There will be a tandem...
The tug-of-war is over the pool? The loser gets pulled into the pool?
I wish we were able to do that, but no. There will be a tandem bike race. That would be a timed event, and then water balloon fights, that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any other discussion?
If not, Peter, obviously, before this proceeds, you will obtain the insurance information, liquor license, and other licenses regarding food vendors.
So, with that, I would ask Kathy, would you please call the roll? We have a motion in a second.
Trustee Sussman, aye. Trustee Salz?
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds?
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz?
Aye.
Trustee Satchy?
Aye.
Trustee Ballereen?
Aye.
And that is approved, and good luck with the event. Trustee Shavitz?
All right. Moving on to Item 8A3. This is an application, special event application submitted by Shannon Lang for her Girl Scout Gold Award Tree Planting Project. Ms. Lang is a Riverside resident who is a student at St. Ignatius College Prep and a Girl Scout. Shannon is currently working on her Girl Scout Gold Award, which is the equivalent of Eagle Scout and Boy Scouting. The Gold Award recognizes girls who make a difference in their communities and in their own lives. Shannon has proposed a fundraiser for planting trees on public lands in the Village of Riverside. She hopes to secure enough funding to plant 100 trees in honor of the 100th anniversary of Girl Scouting. Ms. Lang is working with Public Works Director Ed Bailey and Village Forester Michael Collins to identify locations that would be suitable for planting new trees. She has applied for a grant from Riverside Township and is promoting the effort via posters and a banner in Guthrie Park. Staff supports the project. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the special event application for the Shannon Lang Girl Scout Gold Award Project to be held on Saturday, September 22nd, 2012.
Second.
So, we have a motion by trustee Shavitz, second by trustee Sussman. If we could ask Ms. Lang to please step up to the microphone and just, in your own words, please, give us a little bit of a background on this project.
Sure. So, I'm a member of Girl Scout Troop 4590, which is here in Riverside. You might have remembered, we did Riverfest a couple of years ago. So, now I'm currently trying to get my Gold Award, which, like Mr. Shavitz just said, is kind of the equivalent of the Boy Scout-Eagle Scout Award, if you kind of like base those two. So, I'm trying to get an event, which, like you said, to plant 100 trees, because I know we had someone earlier talking about how we're losing a lot of trees and due to diseases, and a lot of them are, they're just not getting in water, and they're not getting replanted. So, my goal is to hopefully plant 100 trees by having people donate funds, and then through the village, I'm gonna ask that we could have the village help store the trees when we get them, and then also help plant them. And I have little flyers that I made that I'm going to be passing out. Can you pass this down? And then also, I submitted what the banner is going to look like, but I had to change a little bit because of, to fit it onto the size of the banner. So, I also have that. So, I'll test that as well.
Actually, you only have the size of 98, you know, but that's...
I was gonna say. And I don't know how much trees cost, but he weighed $500 around.
Yeah, that is...
So, you might get a little more mileage on that.
Yeah. I think we estimated that each tree was about $300 for each tree.
So, you know what? You should hit him up for like $600.
Yeah, I think that we're definitely gonna call him. Um, yeah.
You'll remember that you suggested that.
That's fine. I'm on tape. I'm on video. So, Don, $600.
So, yeah, the idea of the 100 trees kind of came from, this year is the 100th anniversary of Girl Scouts. Juliet Gordon Low from Savannah, Georgia, she founded it 100 years ago this year. So, it's very exciting, and everyone in the Girl Scout community is very excited about it. There's a lot of events going on, and I kind of want to honor that with this event, as well as improving the community, our ecosystem, and beautifying the village.
Can you tell us a little bit what's gonna happen, actually, on the 20th?
Yes. So, the event is gonna be in the train station, the little portico, if you know what I'm talking about. It's like a, it's like a porch kind of area. I'm sure you've walked past it. And I'm gonna have a couple of tables, and probably two. And one of them is gonna be for people to come in and sign in and write a check. And it's gonna go to, the check is going to be for the village. I can't, it's part of the event that I can't take the money, it can't go to me. It's gonna go to the village, and they're gonna order the trees. And I'm kind of facilitating it, and this event is sort of for me collecting these and getting the trees ordered. So, and then I'm also gonna have on the other table, part of my project is sustainability, which means that I'm gonna educate people about, you know, when to know if your tree is dying and how to be replaced, and also who you should contact, like the forester, about these trees and the problems that are going on. So, that we know, so we're not losing these trees. We can prevent a lot of that.
And when would they be planted?
Um, well, it takes, let me think. What was it? Like, is that me? What? It takes a couple weeks after we order them, we're gonna order them as soon as we get all the, I guess, how many people are gonna buy them at the event, they must sign up, and then we're gonna figure out what kind of trees we're getting and where we need to get, order them. I believe the forester has, we have a nursery that the village usually uses for the 50/50 tree program, so we're probably gonna use that. And then after, we're hopefully gonna, I mean, we want to do it before the end of, obviously, the planting season and this fall, so, a couple weeks and then when we get the trees. I'm asking the village if they can store them and then help plant them once we get them.
And then Shannon, are you going to be involved in selecting the kind of trees and where they're gonna go in the village?
Yeah, I'm planning on talking to the forester more about what kind of trees we need and where. Obviously, I believe he has a kind of a going list of where we're losing trees and what kinds that are most needed, so that is gonna be, we're probably gonna have like a list of like what people, what kind of trees each person should probably buy, or what if they're interested in getting this, a certain type of tree, but I need to get that list from him.
So this is, say, I could either make a donation to you, or I could actually participate in the co-op program, right? Because what if I don't need a tree? I could still make a donation.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it's not just for us in front of someone's house, it's for like parkways, it's not just in someone's lawn.
Right, so it's for either kind of, you need a tree for their parkway or somebody who just wants to support the Girl Scouts.
Shannon, what happens if somebody wants to, do you have a way of, if someone's unable to be there on September 22nd, do you have a pre-order? Can they call the village?
Um, yeah, I think a number of girls through my troop and I are gonna go kind of door-to-door and ask me if people would like to either come to the event or at the time, order a tree. So hopefully that will get more people than just the event.
Any other questions for Shannon? If not, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sussman, aye. Trustee Sells.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
I'll take one.
And thank you, that resolution is adopted, so good luck with the event, and we encourage our residents and friends of Riverside to please come out on September 22nd and participate in this good event. Thank you. Trustee Shavitz?
Last item is...
[laughing]
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, my last item for the evening is a special event application submitted by the Active Transportation Alliance for the Four Star Bike Tour to be held on Sunday, August 26th, 2012. Why, that is this Sunday, I believe. In August 2010, the Active Transportation Alliance hosted the Boulevard Lakefront Tour, a recreational bike ride through Chicago in the suburbs. The route passed through Riverside, and the ATA set up a rest area for riders in Guthrie Park, featuring a mobile bicycle repair station and refreshments. Over 500 riders had the opportunity to tour Riverside on their bicycles. The event did not necessitate the use of any village services and provided an excellent opportunity to showcase Riverside as a great place to cycle. In 2011, the name of the event was changed to the Four Star Bike Tour, and the route did not pass through Riverside. In 2012, the route will, once again, include Riverside, and the ATA has requested permission to set up a rest area for bicyclists in Guthrie Park. It is anticipated that riders will be traveling through the village between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 12:00 noon on Sunday, August 26th, 2012. The ATA has assured the village that event participants are advised to follow the rules of the road as they ride through Riverside and surrounding communities. Staff will also take the following steps to help raise resident awareness of the event: post the route maps and publicize the event on the village website, notify residents of the event via the Eflash, send a press release to the local papers so they cover the event in Riverside, notify all churches in the community, and ask them to make an announcement after each mass service to alert those in attendance to the presence of the bicyclists, and have information about the village available for riders at the rest stop in Guthrie Park. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the special event application for the Four Star Bike Tour, sponsored by the ATA, to be held on Sunday, August 26th, 2012, with riders anticipated on Riverside streets between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Second. So we have a motion by trustee Shavitz, a second by trustee Ballerine. Is there any discussion on this item? Trustee Sachi?
Was this the organization that put nails in trees last year? Jim?
No, that was the, I believe that was the...
That was the run.
Run, no, yeah, yeah. That was a run, right.
That was the run? All right.
Wasn't that...
Clearing up that item, we shall, hearing nothing further...
Did you want that group back, honey? Is that what you're asking?
Hearing nothing further...
I'm in favor of nails.
Kathy, would you please call the roll on this special event application?
Trustee Sussman, aye. Trustee Sells.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Okay.
Thank you, and that motion passes, and that the application is approved. Trustee Shavitz, you have anything further?
I have nothing further this year.
All right, well, thank you. We'll move on to Public Works, Transportation, and Utilities. Trustee Sells?
Thank you, Mr. President. With the board's permission, I too will take some things out of order, because Mr. Jametro is here. My first item is a resolution authorizing the village manager to approve a hardscape permit from Mike Jametro for the installation of wood duck nest boxes on public property adjacent to the Splains River. The village municipal code requires that persons intending to place objects that will be in place in excess of 72 hours must first submit a hardscape permit application. The permit must be approved by the village board trustees after receiving comments from the Landscape Advisory Commission and the Preservation Commission. Mr. Mike Jametro of 140 Riverside Road has submitted a hardscape permit application for the purpose of erecting wood duck nest boxes on public land adjacent to the Splains River and east of the intersection of Conley Road and Fairbank Road, a location often referred to as a natural area. Construction and installation of the nest boxes is associated with his Eagle Scout candidacy, and the objective of the project is to strengthen the wood duck population and the local Splains ecosystem, and to bring awareness of the, to the local community of the need to properly maintain the local habitat. The hardscape permit application was presented to the Landscape Advisory Commission and to the Preservation Commission, and they both recommend adoption. The village has a long history of supporting and participating in Eagle Scout projects, and the proposed wood duck nest box project is likely to have a positive influence on the community with mental, if any, negative impact. So I would like to move to approve the hardscape permit application for this project.
Second. So I have a motion by trustee Sells, a second by trustee Reynolds. And Mike, you were with us this evening, if you'd please step up and just give us a little background on this project, how it came about.
As I said, the project is to build wood duck boxes, specifically six boxes, at the two sites along the Splains River. And the idea is, because the wood duck population used to be one of the strongest in the entire United States, but due to habitat destruction and overhunting, they were decimated, but they've been on the rise again due to programs like this, especially on the East Coast. Illinois, and specifically around the Great Lakes, used to be the heart of what would have been the nesting region, but because of this, it's mostly been pushed further south. But ideally, the wood ducks would like to nest here, there's just no natural habitat for them. So the only way to give them a place to nest is to build artificial boxes for them to nest in. And it's, it looks like a large birdhouse, probably about this tall, and the birds lay usually about six to eight eggs, all depends on the clutch, and they lay the eggs in the box and will, one, incubate the eggs, and as soon as they hatch, they take the ducklings out of the box and do not return to them for the rest of the year. But they need areas around the boxes where they can raise the young, specifically the Splains River in this area is great because it floods, and the ducklings in the spring, it can give them plenty of stuff to feed on in that flooded area. It's an easy area for them to learn to swim in, rather than getting right onto the big river. So it's ideal for raising ducklings in. Any other questions about the actual boxes themselves?
Mike, it's my understanding, after listening to you speak to the LAC, that these are gonna be attached to trees in some locations?
Mm-hmm, they would definitely be mounted to trees about six to eight feet off the ground is generally where they're placed, depending on where you can find branches. And there was a request from the LAC and from Mike Collins, the forester, if all possible, to use dead trees to mount them on, so we'll be going, I'll be going out with Mike Collins, and he's gonna help with the selection of the trees.
Of the dead trees?
Yeah, so we'll, it kind of depends on where the site is, but it'll be about 50 feet away from the river is how far back the trees are. And actually, from the path that goes on the river, they'll be able to be viewed from there, most likely, so we'll even, some people might be able to see the wood ducks during the spring and the ducklings.
How did you decide on this project?
We, I wanted to do something, I'm sure you've seen some Eagle Scout projects in the past, we've recorded a few through, but I wanted to do something that was a little different than just planting something or doing something, so I wanted to do a project that was gonna last a while and actually help with the, I want to do something involving natural, and I figured a great way, with Riverside, we have a very rich ecosystem, and wood ducks are something that generally indicates how healthy a river is. If you have wood ducks on your river, it's a good indicator that you're doing well. So wood duck, they're also one of the most beautiful ducks, if you've seen the pictures in there, they're, the males have the very nice plumes and the green heads, so bringing, enriching a population that's natural to this area but isn't living here today is gonna have very long-reaching effects for the whole ecosystem in Riverside.
When do you anticipate installing these boxes?
The hope would be late this fall. The ducks come early spring to scout their area and pick their boxes, usually about two weeks before they actually nest, so it will definitely need to be before winter, hopefully late fall. I have, as I gather materials, and then the actual building would be taken care of by the Boy Scouts, we're gonna do that, and the installation, plus any village volunteers that would like to come out and help. And the boxes need to be maintained annually because wood ducks can't carry in their own nesting material, they have to have sawdust put into it and maintenance, and I'm currently talking with the group Roots and Shoots in Riverside, which is a youth environmental group, and they have made a pledge to do the annual maintaining of that.
And the, so for folks who don't have this in front of them, what is the location of where these boxes will be?
Just down from Indian Gardens, along the path that runs along the river, in that low natural area, there, floods there, and it'd be spread out along there. The boxes will be spread out throughout that whole area because you don't want them too close together, but you need a close enough proximity so that you don't have what's called a dump box, where more than one female nests in the same box, and then there's too many eggs, so some of them die. So spread out throughout there, and then also, a little further down, there's that grassy open area and the peninsula that juts out from the lion's side of the river, and that area right there where there's that large span of open calm water.
Thank you. You are troop 24?
Yes, troop 24.
You guys have been before us on a number of occasions. Your troop has put forth a number of Eagle Scout projects that have been very beneficial to the village, so thank you. Any further comments or questions for Mike?
I would just say, Mike, I know that there is an avid birding community here in Riverside, so when it comes time to do this, let me know. I think I can get you some help.
Yeah, volunteers will, I'll definitely try to put out the word, that'd be great.
Thank you, trustee Sells, for getting first on the list there.
All right, with nothing further, I will ask Kathy Haley to please call the roll on this special, on this hardscape permit.
Trustee Sussman, aye. Trustee Sells.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
And that is approved, so thank you, and Mike, good luck with that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Next, trustee Sells, you still have a couple items?
Yes, next item is a resolution authorizing the village... My throat's kind of parched, I think I'll have some refreshment. Riverside, Minnesota. A resolution authorizing the village manager to approve a contract with the amount of $14,702.93 with National Power Rotting Corporation for emergency sewer repair of the Swan Pond's sewer main. National Power Rotting Corporation has performed all or most of the sewer televising and cleaning projects in the village since 2004. Following the collapse and repair of a brick manhole that serves a 24-inch sewer main located at the northern edge of Swan Pond, village staff engaged National Power Rotting Corporation to delive the main to determine whether the sewer main had become obstructed by brick and other debris associated with the collapse. The 24-inch sewer main conveys wastewater from the First Division, the village west of First Avenue, as well as the West Avenue area. The company immediately discovered that the main was so clogged with tree roots that a televising device could not enter the sewer main. It also appeared that there was four to five inches of sediment and other debris deposited at the bottom of the main. Given the large area of Riverside served by the main and the degree of obstruction, village staff authorized National Power Rotting to proceed with cleaning the main at the earliest opportunity. So I've moved to approve a contract in the amount of $14,702.93 with National Power Rotting Corporation for emergency sewer repairs of the Swan Pond's sewer main.
Second. So I have a motion by trustee Sells and a second by trustee Reynolds, and Michael, our village attorney, you have a comment?
Yes, I would suggest that this item be amended to add a waiver of competitive bidding, so similar to the next item, it would be a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to approve the contract.
So with the addition of those words, we have a motion in a second, do you incorporate that change? Trustee Reynolds?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you, Michael. So we have a motion and a second, waiving competitive bidding, and moving forward with this contract with National Power Rotting Corporation. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sussman, aye. Trustee Sells.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
And this resolution is adopted, thank you. Trustee Sells?
My next item is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to enter into the sales agreement with KSA Lighting of Hannover Park, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $40,265.88 for the purchase of six Sternberg lighting fixtures for the Village Green Parking Lot located at 6163 Burlington Street. In December 2010, the village submitted an application for the Illinois Green Infrastructure Grant Program for its green pavement projects. In July 2011, the village was notified by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, the agency managing the grant, that the village had been awarded the full amount, $502,663, of the application request for the Green Alley and Burlington Parking Lot projects. At the May 21st, 2012 regular meeting, the village board approved a contract with Great Lakes Landscape Company to complete the Green Alley and Parking Lot work. The streetlight element was not an eligible cost in the grant program, therefore, the cost of the lights will be charged through the Parking Lot Fund. Due to the historic design of Riverside's streetlights, the number of vendors offering an exact replica is very limited. A search was completed by Public Works Director Bailey, and he found that KSA Lighting of Hannover Park has a fixture that matches the village's gas lamps. Staff recommends the approval of the sales agreement for the purchase of six light standards for the Village Green Parking Lot associated, or located at 6163 Burlington. So I would move to approve the resolution waiving competitive bidding and directing the village manager to enter into an agreement with KSA Lighting for the purchase of six streetlight fixtures not to exceed the amount of $40,265.88 to be installed at the Burlington Green Parking Lot located at 6163 Burlington.
Second. So I have a motion by trustee Sells and a second by trustee Shavitz, is there any discussion or questions?
Yes, I, can I?
Please.
I thought we were gonna say the same thing. This is an awful lot of money for lights. There is no alternative, I mean, why, to start with, why six? Why do we need six in particular?
Well, part of it is to meet the light code standard within our own code, that the candlelight per width, there's actually, the parking lot is going, is, was prepped for eight light standards, but we're only putting in six.
And these are LEDs, right?
LED lights.
Still almost $7,000 a light.
Unfortunately, yep.
Next.[1777.41] Next.
Besides that, I was going to say, what the level of brightness here concerns me, the women and air should all use high output, high brightness LEDs. How compatible is that with the current lighting business district? Is this gonna be tighter than what's there now?
Same thing.
Is it gonna be the same thing?
Ed, do you wanna step up and address that, our Public Works Director, Ed Bailey?
These are in fact the same lights that are in the downtown business district. The only difference being that the ones that are existing in the downtown business district are bolt-on. These are direct berry. But as far as the, the design, the height of the light standard itself and the fixture, they're the same.
Ed, what's the expected life of these units?
I don't, I know, these are, these are metal halide lights. They're, as a matter of fact, many of the ones downtown, in fact, are mercury vapor and they're no longer available. So this is the replacement for them moving forward, but they're, I don't know. We don't track it, I guess, and so I don't really have a response to that.
For, for a comparison, say, how much are the lights that were in downtown, the ones we have that are no longer available? How much are those, basically?
No, the, these are the same, essentially the same lights.
Right, or classified, compared to the old ones?
Essentially the same. If, if we were to go out and buy a new light, you know, like a standard and the fixture, the cost would be approximately the same for one sta- you know, one of those or six of those as being proposed. These are expensive, there's no doubt about it. But these are, we don't, you know, we, we stock these, some of these light standards and we also, for when they're hit by a car or something like that, and then there's the light fixture on top of the light, so... This isn't, you know, they're not, they're expensive, but on the other hand, we don't usually buy six together.
And this, and Peter, this is out of the parking lot fund?
Correct.
What's the, what's the balance, or maybe Jessica knows, what's the current parking lot fund balance? Do you know? Oh, I'm, sorry to put you on the spot.
There's enough in there to cover the cost of the lights.
Okay, well, it's not the cost of the lights I'm worried about, it's worried, I know we're gonna be resourcing lot one at some point in the near future, the big lot by the swim club, and I know we're not gonna probably be able to get a green grant for that because we got it for the Burlington lots. So, are we gonna have money to redo that lot in the near future, just planning to refund these?
The big question is, is either we do these lights and match the lights that we have downtown, pay the price, or find another light that is cheaper that doesn't match the ones that are out. But you have to put something, because-
Oh yeah, I'm not, I don't think anybody's disputing that, I don't think we're saying-
There's a light that's sitting on the ground.
Or else it's just a daytime lot, I don't, but yeah. Jessica, can you-
The parking lot fund for the current fiscal year, right, as it stands right now, is projected to end in a surplus of eleven thousand. And in the parking lot, as of fiscal year twenty-eleven, available ones-
One intense pause.
Sorry.
That's okay.
In two thousand and eleven, Jessica?
Yes.
You kind of projected as eleven thousand dollars to apply.
Yeah.
That's, and so I guess-
Let's say it this year.
That's, so you had for two thousand-
Yeah, I just wanna know what the fund balance was is at the end of last year.
For two thousand and eleven?
So, Ed, while they're, while they're looking at that, looking for that-
For twenty-twelve, it's projected to end at two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five?
Correct.
Okay.
So, just in this, in the world of light fixtures, I mean, going back to what, you know, Trustee Ballerine said, if we, if we went to a different kind of light standard that was close but not exact, I mean, how much less are they?
Wouldn't know unless we have to identify the, the light fixture. You know, depends what kind of light you want, but they can get quite inexpensive, I'm sure.
Well, I, I guess, I think, sorry, Mr. Bailey, for those of us who've been by to look at it, aside from maybe linearity there, Lonnie, it's, it looks beautiful and, and it's a part of the downtown. It's supposed to be a part of the downtown, so I would hate having already spent all this money to cheapen it or make it look distinctly different from the rest of the area. It's small enough downtown to break it up with different looks. I'm not certain at this point it makes a lot of sense to me, but it is far. I understand-
You think the lights, or you think the lights are gonna make that much of a difference?
Well, they, they're already up and down Burlington.
Yeah, no, I don't have that. What about the ones just on the Burlington, on Burlington, we just buy those?
Well, these are the same ones.
No, no, my, my point is, I assume that there are gonna be lights that go deeper into the lot. So the ones just to keep the, as you said-
Oh, you mean along the street?
Yeah, so I assume there's-
The back, make them different looking?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, is that an option?
If, if, Ed, if a light is damaged on one of our streets, gets knocked over and it's not usable, where do you turn to get a replacement?
This same supplier that, yeah, there's not a lot around. These, as a matter of fact, the supplier for the fixture on top of the light standard that we're using for many years went out of business recently, or a year or so ago. And we had to really scramble to find an alternate supplier to supply that same fixture to match the ones that are in the village. There's not, not a lot of providers or suppliers of these products, not like there's ten.
So this is the cost?
Mm-hmm.
Unless we do what Mark's suggesting, I don't know, preservation or things like that.
At this point, unless somebody with more knowledge can comment on the role of our light standards with respect to our national historic landmark status, that makes a difference. I would agree with Trustee Sussman that, and we knew this going in, and I certainly would be an advocate to keep the same look throughout the village. Costs money, and we've talked, we've had this discussion before. They had to cost money to maintain our historic landmark status, to maintain who we are. So I would not be happy about the cost either, but the cost is what it is. Now, why are there six lights rather than eight? You said it's plotted out for eight lights?
Plotted out for eight, but our code, the minimum that the code requires is six.
So, through Ed and Peter's work here, we've at least eliminated two of the light fixtures and we're still in a good stead with the amount of light that's gonna be there and so forth.
And you're comfortable that somebody leaving the back of a lot at midnight will have enough light? They walk from, that person walks from Choo Choo or the train or whatever, the person will, a woman will feel uncomfortable with six?
That's what we've striven to do. We have, you know, light pollution issues we have to be concerned about, too. We don't overlight that parking lot.
You actually have a home right next door.
Right, right, so there's some balancing that went on and the, these lights are, you know, selected to match the lights we have. It's not by accident that we're proposing this purchase and-
And the location that we're placing them, two in the front, two in the middle, and then two towards the rear.
See, I'd prefer just to do the two in the front, use this, just to keep the line down Burlington, but find an alternative for the other four.
I, if the board, if that's the desire of the board, I mean, I can, we can work with this company as well as look for other types of light, light standards. I, I would recommend against that because I would recommend for consistency, keeping it all the same. But if the board feels that going the other way, if you want us to look into that, we can do that and bring it back to you.
You know, there's, but there's-
We've argued about consistency before, and, you know, we're spending how much more to make sure all of our sidewalks are, you know, exposed to air again.
Yeah, that's throughout the village, though, we're talking about one area.
This is our village. You know, downtown is the major part of our village and it is the hub that welcomes not only our residents, but welcomes guests. And if you're gonna do it, and we're doing it right, by papers, if you're gonna do it, do it right.
Mr. President, the, the lights that are along the rest of the parking areas on the north side of the tracks, so back of Choo Choo's and back of the post office, are those the same lights that are on Burlington? I can't remember.
I don't, I don't remember, you know, I just, it was late, as recently as this afternoon, I was in that area, but I don't think they're, these types of decorative lamps, I think they're more standard streetlights.
Was, roughly.
Yeah, I just was curious, because if you're thinking of the line along the tracks, for instance.
Almost certainly not these lights.
There actually are, I mean, even with our old gas lights, there are subtle variations in them throughout here.
Oh, we're not talking about subtle?
Right, I, I'm not, I don't mind the subtle variation, but I don't think we should put in some kind of, you know, modernistic light fixture that would clash with the consistency that we try to maintain throughout the village on the light fixtures. You know, I, I agree with Jean on this, and what Mike said, we should maintain the consistency throughout this lot for the six lights. Also, so we don't start having to inventory parts for all different kinds of, for yet another style of light. So, my, my concern, besides the cost that, that Ben raised, was the brightness. So if, if the brightness level is to be kept consistent, and I see that there's options here, we're choosing the middle one on the, on the wattage, then if it's consistent with what's there, then that's what I favor.
Lonnie, even if the ones along the rest of the north side of the track are different, farther west?
What's that, Jean?
Well, what I think Ed said was that the lights along, along the north side of the tracks where the parking is and back of the buildings there-
Where the employee parking is.
Where the employee parking is, are not, or the post office, are not the lights that we see on Burlington.
Okay.
I can't even picture them, but-
I, I, I think that-
Circle of decorative lighting, but they're made from-
I, I think they're similar, though.
Yeah, I think they're very similar.
They're very similar.
And that, and that is also, I mean, you gotta remember, it's also, you may think it's the back of the parking lot, but it's also the front of the parking lot if you're driving down the train, you know, the commuters, that's our rev scape.
Right, I'm just thinking about what else is along there, unless it's really ugly along there.
I think they're, I think they're the same.
I guess I-
I think they are.
I think they are.
Yeah, I, I think they're, they're close, they're, they're not, uh-
Probably not a lot, these are, you know, these are unique, I mean, there's not every day fixtures.
So that, that's what I wanted to follow, I mean, people are gonna continue to run into these things for years to come.
It, it occurs.
So, is this the only place that you found that could actually reproduce this look?
This is our supplier that, well... These, this is the one supplier for these, this style of lamps that we have identified. There, there might be more, I don't know if there is. As a matter of fact, these companies go out of business and I think that recession had an impact on some of these suppliers. You know, the recession we just went through-
They're mixing up a lot.
Fewer than there used to be, so...
Crap.
I don't know that we're going to, and, and they tend to be, they tend to have, you know, manufacturers as suppliers for certain areas, so it isn't like, you know, there's all kinds of different manufacturers and suppliers, it's just the opposite, where they have territories.
I guess where I'm going with this is if, if, you know, if two years from now, this, this company's gonna be out of business and then we can't get these lights made, you know, so now we're replacing lights with something as similar as we can get, but we're not using these, are we better off trying to find a light that, that approximates what we have, but something that we know we're going to be able to get long-term, as we have to replace them in decades to come?
I would've thought that's what Ed would've done, right? I would've thought he would've tried to find a light that approximates where we're at, right?
This, these lights that are presented to you are specifically, the intent is to match what's existing in a downtown area. That was, that was a-
Well, that's a little different than what you're saying, that, right? You said it did.
You know, we didn't go out looking for different types of lights. It's kind of the goal was, let's match what's, and tie the parking lot into the Burlington street, um, street scape, I guess you'd say.
I have just one more question, please. Bob or Michael, do you know what's in the zoning code for the B-two for lights? I know, I'm surprised, I didn't, I, hey, I didn't walk around with the zoning code. Oh, but you did, and Bob did. I wonder if that'll answer our question, because if it's required by code, then-
I think it's in the preservation appendix of the classification.
And it would be in the zoning, I, I'm sorry, Richard, do you think it's in?
But that's, that's-
Well, if that's the case, and that was a wealth, then I think we have to go with that.
It's in the appendix of the-
They're not exactly the same, they're pretty damn much the same.
It's in the zoning code as well. Lighting's all in the zoning.
Are we waiting for-
So, Joe just pulled it up here on his, on his pad here, and they, they are very much the same, even, even along the lot there, if you wanna come and look at, yeah.
This is, this is Riverside Bank parking lot, they're right next to Riverside Banks.
Yeah, does anyone need to see it, or you wanna take our word for it?
I, I'll take your, 'cause it's for two of you, I'll take your word for it, if that's okay.
Well, okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and we have a number of trustees here who seem to be in favor of proceeding with this, so I'm gonna call a vote. If it does not, if the motion does not pass, then we have an option of considering otherwise, yes.
I, I did wanna point out that because this involves a waiver of bidding, then it requires approval of four of the trustees.
Okay, good, thank you for, for clarifying for that, so-
I just want, can we just double check if Bob's almost there on the lighting? I'd just like to know if voting against it means that we have to go back and change our code.
Zoning's gonna kick it back to, uh, the stone zoning code.
Yeah, I, I know, it's the same thing.
It would be in the, in the B-two zoning, right, Bob?
It's in B-two, I just had the page and I lost it, and it refers back to exterior lighting. The, the B-two specifies it back to the general section of the zoning code. Light bulbs for single families, with the exception of the ornamental lighting in the B-two district that is similar to the, the village's historic gas lighting fixtures and is consistent with the historic character of the central business, business district, all onsite lighting shall be equipped with shielding and cutoff devices so, such that no light shall shine directly upon adjacent residentially zoned properties or the public ride away. High-pressure sodium fixtures shall be prohibited. Light intensity shall not exceed one-tenth foot candle as measured at any residential property line and at one-foot candle as measured at all other property lines. All lighting installed as of the effective date of this ordinance shall be allowed to continue as a conforming use provided is maintained in a safe operating condition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. So with that, we have a motion and a second to waive the competitive bidding and proceed with this resolution. So Kathy Haley, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Sells?
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds?
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz?
Aye.
Trustee Satchi?
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine?
Aye.
Thank you, so this resolution is adopted. When will this installation take place, do you think?
It'll take a few weeks for us to receive the lights and then after we get that, we will have them up.
Thank you. Trustee Sells, anything further?
Uh, yes, just a few items of interest for the community. I'd like to just give a quick update on our Public Works projects that have been going on since our last meeting. With regard to street improvements, the underground utility work, including small sections of curb and gutter and sidewalk ramps, have been completed on South Coat Road. In addition, the first layer of asphalt has been installed and the second, the final, final layer is scheduled for sometime this week, given the weather we've had, we've been having. On Wabanci Road, underground utility work, including the transfer of both residents and fire hydrants from a four-inch cast iron water main to an existing eight-inch main, has been completed. And that street has been completely excavated and a gravel subbase installed. Installation of new curb and gutter, again, will begin this week. And the, the goal is to have Wabanci Road complete within a week, weather permitting. With regard to our sidewalk replacement program, with the exception of concrete work around the railroad crossing of Harlem Avenue between East Quincy and East Burlington, the sidewalk program is near one-hundred percent complete for, for this, this year. As we were just talking about, the alleys between York Road and Kent Road have been complete for several weeks now. The East Burlington Street parking lot is approximately seventy-five percent complete, with installation of brick pavers being the most significant task yet, yet to do. And if people haven't had a chance to walk by it, it actually is extremely nice. The landscaping has been put in. The additional items that remain include a fence, the lighting we just talked about, the bench and waste receptacle. And just as an alert to the board, I, I would like to revisit this notion of the fence there, that we're, that we're thinking about putting there. And if you have a chance to go out and take a look at the site, I think you'll see why. Part of the beauty of that site is the openness of it, and I'm very concerned about putting that fence up. But we, of course, have to talk to the residents there, the- that fence up, but we, of course, have to talk to the residents there, the house that's there doesn't have a lot of windows on that side, so I don't think lighting protection would be a significant issue, but that's something we could talk about maybe at our next meeting. Metro has given approval to a revised scope of work for the Tuck Pointing Project at the train station. The project will be advertised for bids on August 29th with a planned bid award of October 1st, and substantial completion is expected by November 2nd. In terms of community appearance, this is probably what most people have seen the most around town. The Department of Public Works has been on a project repainting the waste receptacle covers throughout the village, they've been painting many of the gas lamp posts in the central business district, and the handrail around the train depot. Areas of broken concrete on the train depot steps have been repaired, and you've also seen a lot of the safety marking on the streets have been repainted. And Peter alluded to many of the water and sewer repairs, recent water system repairs include a main break at York Road and Selvern Road, as well as at Long Common and Evelyn, and a hydrant water leak at Herrick and Harlem has also been repaired. So they have been very busy, as they always are.
As well as the real significant break on First Avenue.
Right, First Avenue, which was prior to our last meeting. So that's all of the public works. I did get an email from a member of the Riverside Swim Club, who asked that I announce that the Riverside Swim Club Barracudas finished first in their conference. Over 250 swimmers take play, take part in that program, and over 100 families are represented, so congratulations to Riverside Swim Club Barracudas.
Was that your son, Michael? Is that why you look so happy?
He didn't make the finals, but he is part of the Barracudas. It was an exciting time.
And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Sells. Moving on to Public Safety Health and Landscape, Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just have one item this evening, and for those of you that might have missed the announcement, I would like to let you know that the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, the ILACP, has recertified Chief Thomas Weitzel by being designated as a certified police chief through the association's police chief certification program. This designation signifies that Chief Weitzel has met the highest standards of competency and conduct for his profession, and this is no mean task. To be eligible for consideration, those interested in pursuing certification must first meet the ILACP's criteria for experience, education, professional membership, and community involvement. In the first phase of the process, candidates must demonstrate extensive law enforcement experience, including command and executive posts, a solid educational background that encompasses continuing education and training, and an active participation in relevant professional and community organizations. After meeting these requirements, they are allowed to proceed with a certification examination, which tests their knowledge of managerial concepts, modern policing concepts, law and leading cases, and budgeting principles. Candidates who demonstrate their mastery in these areas must then face a panel of their peers, consisting of three active Illinois police chiefs. During the structured interview, the panel questions and evaluates the candidate in the areas of leadership, management, public relations, verbal communication, and ethics. Only those who have successfully completed all phases of the assessment process are granted the distinction of a certified police chief in Illinois. Chief Weitzel is among only a select few of police command staff who have been able to meet the stringent requirements of the program since its inception in 1998, and on behalf of the entire board, I would like to congratulate the chief for such an accomplishment. Thank you, Chief Weitzel. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jim, for bringing that up, for everybody to make sure they heard that, and thank you, Chief Weitzel, for pursuing your professional qualifications and serving as a fine leader for our Riverside Police Department. Next up is River Parks and Recreation, Trustee Ballerin.
I just have one thing tonight, I'd like to acknowledge Ron, Teresa, and Stevie for their outstanding job with the new program of the day camp that was held this summer. It concluded, we've had nothing but positive response from the residents that had their children through, it was a huge undertaking and a big endeavor, and they did a great job. Secondly, I only promised one thing, but I'm going to say two, but it's kind of the same thing. Teresa, if everyone noticed, Teresa on the 3rd and the 4th of July, she was very, very pregnant. She is no longer very, very pregnant. She had a young baby boy about the 10th or 11th. Well, I've tried to text Ron to find out what the baby's name was, and I haven't, Jonathan. And he's come into the rec department a couple times, it's hard to keep Teresa out, and we all wish her well and can't wait for her to return.
Very good.
Thank you, Trustee Ballerin. Moving on to Building Planning and Zoning, Trustee Sussman.
Yes, thank you. I am going, I, let me just start by asking if Scott Zimmer is outside, I don't think he is, is he the owner of Choo Choo's? Anybody see him out there? No? No? Okay, thanks. All right, well, what we have before us is consideration of a request by the Choo Choo for outdoor dining with liquor service as a temporary use on a trial basis. I'm going to read the first page, but I'm sure everybody will be happy to know I'm not going to read the rest of it, we'll talk about some of the issues in this proposal. "A restaurant with an outdoor café is a special use in the retail core sub-district of the B2 Central Business District. The Choo Choo has requested that it be allowed to try outdoor dining on a temporary basis without going through the special use process," temporary basis is the key here, "in order to determine whether outdoor dining would be workable for all parties going forward. There was a plan commission meeting on July 17th, which Mr. Zimmer attended, and he presented his proposal and answered questions. After discussion and consideration, the plan commission voted four to zero to recommend that the Board of Trustees approve a temporary use for outdoor seating at the Choo Choo to consist of five tables with four seats each for a one-year trial period." Now, just so you'll know, the tables go against the wall, you know, against the building itself, they project, the six feet actually project out from the wall with two chairs on either side, so four people can sit there. And we actually have a detailed drawing in our packet, thank you. The seating that is proposed here, it is adjacent, a planter is proposed for either end of the row of tables to delineate the seating area, and we'll talk in a bit about fencing versus the planter and the code. A memo detailing the various zoning and village code provisions that govern the proposed temporary use, outdoor cafes in general, and liquor licenses related to the request is attached. Whether to approve the request for a temporary use is a policy decision. Should the Board favor approval, we, meaning our legal representation, would recommend that the approval be conditioned on the following: execution of a license agreement between the village and Choo Choo relative to the use of right of way, and we'll talk about that, execution of a hold harmless agreement prepared by the village, and we'll talk about that, and submittal by Choo Choo of general liability and dray shop liability insurance, naming the village as an additional insured, and all these are a part of our code. In addition, there are some other points we need to consider. The duration, whether 12 months makes sense to us or not as a temporary license, the, I mentioned delineation, because our code for outdoor eating calls for a fence, and he's asking for planters for space reasons, and then in our code for outdoor dining, not in the temporary code, but in the actual special use, we also specify design criteria. So I think we just need to acknowledge whether or not we're going to require that for a temporary use. Okay? So then, if we could first go to, um, the next page, under temporary approval, so that we understand this. In our code, there is a list of temporary uses that can be determined by the village manager. Outdoor dining is not one of them, so that's why we are looking at that today. This is what the administratively approved. And such temporary uses may be granted, provided they are consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. And in here, Mr. Mars suggests that we look at whether one year is really a temporary approval, if that's what we want to consider. I think, just as an aside, I think part of it has to do with the timing of the request, it's already the fall. Okay, so then, having said that, outdoor dining is in the next code. Regulation of outdoor eating. Outdoor eating cafes are regulated in the village code. Cafes are allowed as temporary uses on private property and on village right of way. So the difference between this and Molly's is that Molly's is private property, and this is actually the village right of way. Cafes are only permitted along the front edge of said restaurants or other property immediately adjacent to the restaurant, and they're allowed April through November. Excuse me while I find something else. Okay? So, and then, Mr. Mars attached the special use table on page 120 of our board packet, but I'm not certain we really need to go through that right away. And then, the next point that was brought up was the whole, the, well, if you turn to page 121, which is the code itself, outdoor eating cafes, it explains the qualifications that Mr. Mars is recommending we put in place. So at the top, it says outdoor eating cafes, A is eligibility, B is requirement for outdoor cafes. If you go down to number seven of B, and this is what Mr. Mars refers to in his cover sheet. "If utilizing the public right of way or other property owned or leased by the village, the applicant must apply for a permit and agree to enter into a lease of the right of way, sign a hold harmless agreement prepared for the village, and submit to the village evidence of general liability insurance, and when applicable, dray shop liability insurance, including the village as a named insured and insuring the village against any liability. Minimum coverage shall be $1 million per occurrence, and the company issuing the policy shall have no less than an A rating by the most recent AM Best Insurance Rating Guide, guide, excuse me. The decision as to whether to approve a permit shall be within the discretion of the village board based on the, so this is for an outdoor eating cafe, but this is what Mike is recommending for the temporary use permit as well." Okay? So that is that. Then, on fencing, you'll see from number eight right there, "In no case shall the operation of the sidewalk cafe reduce the open portion of public and private sidewalk to less than five feet." That will not occur, if you look at his plan, that will not occur. And if you go back then to Mr. Mars' memorandum, sorry, I just want to make sure that everybody understands the details of what we're getting into here. If you go to the second page, first full paragraph, "Among the board considerations is this: Outdoor cafes are required to be delineated with a fence or other means of separation. The Choo Choo proposal calls for a delineation at both ends of the temporary area with planters. Whether that constitutes sufficient delineation under the code for this temporary use is a matter for us to decide." I want to double check, I, we had asked Mr. Mars to check on the public safety issue, and I believe that the proposal put forth by Choo Choo is not, is not a public safety issue at all. The fact that there's not a fence, the fact that people use the sidewalk.
Well, I think someone had asked about the state requirements for enclosure, and, you know, I don't, there is no state requirement that I'm aware of that it requires liquor areas to be enclosed. The safety issues really are, you know, are the planters, sufficient delineation to alert people that there is an obstruction to the right of way.
All right, and then the other two criteria we talked about were, one, were designed, and that's in the permanent, having an outdoor café permanent, it talks about how much wind force the furniture has to withstand, and that it fits with the design of the downtown, that sort of thing. And then lastly, the issue of the 12 months. So, I'd like to move that we, well, this, do we move on anything? This is consideration of a request, Mike, what are we asking for?
Yeah, you can make a motion.
That we approve the request?
Yes, if you look at the bottom of the agenda history sheet.
Okay, I'd like to move that we approve the outdoor dining request, subject to the conditions that we, subject to any amendments or any conditions that we determine through this discussion.
Second.
Well, wait, before you, there's some blanks in this, at the bottom of this page.
I'm sorry?
You're looking at the action proposed at the bottom of the agenda history page?
Yeah, I think we want to talk about what conditions we want to put in here.
Then, we need to talk about that before you have the motion to adopt the resolution?
Sure, I thought we actually had to move before we had much of a discussion.
She can, she can move it with, like she said, with, subject to later amendment, just to get the discussion started.
You want to do it? Is that okay? So, the first items for discussion are the ones that Mr. Mars presented, the ones that I read out loud, that we have to have a license agreement, that we have to be held harmless, and that the liability insurance be met, the requirements in our code be met. And that's all in that paragraph I read, so that's one of those things. Another item that I thought we should talk about is the fencing, the delineation. So our code requires fencing. You'll see that actually at Molly's, and you may recall that that was something that actually staff followed up on, to make sure that Molly's put in the fencing. The concern here is that the waitstaff, even though there's not going to be anybody sitting on the end of the table, the table that, the end that projects into the sidewalk, waiters, waitstaff will still need to get through. And I believe that the concern is that the fence will be moved around, these tents, fence are temporary, at least at this point it'll be temporary, and that it may not make sense, it may get really in the way of people getting through and of the waitstaff getting through. And I believe that that was the argument that Mr. Zimmer used. So I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with that.
Jean, I have a couple of questions that are not third of the, are these black rectangles here, are those the planters that delineate the space?
Yes.
Okay, but those don't, they just project to roughly the end of the table, they don't come out of the corner.
Correct. So that the avenue for waitstaff is just one-
I got it, I got it. So, then, there are no planters in ground up here? This is all clear, with the exception of the garbage can that's like-
That was all cleared out, that was part of the redoing of Burlington.
Okay, okay. So we're saying with waitstaff standing there, and with fencing, it may be encroaching upon the clear space for right of way, correct?
It's not gonna, the plan is that it won't. We require by code five feet of access, and that excludes any planters or lights or anything like that.
Well, I've got that, but what you were saying was with the fencing, that it may interfere with the waitstaff because they could be moved and so forth.
Yeah, it takes up too much space.
So is the concern that the fencing then would push into that space, or not?
That the fencing could be pushed back into that space, and that it won't give staff enough flexibility to be able to turn around, that sort of thing.
Prevent staff from also kind of being in the right of way.
The commitment is that it will not be in the right, staff will not be in the right of way.
Where is it, I'm sorry, where does the right of way extend?
It's five feet, we're required to have passable sidewalks of five feet by code. Bob, is it, it's five feet, right?
Okay, so they're getting to three foot, right?
Yeah.
So it's a three-foot right of way for the waitstaff?
Correct.
Okay.
And that the, the thought was the fence with the foot pieces that extend in will just be more trouble than there were.
And do we know why Mr. Zimmer's not here?
No, we don't, he knew about the meeting.
He did?
Yeah.
Okay. He is open for business this evening, the planning commission meeting he mentioned, he would perhaps something came up with the business.
He would also, you may recall also that for Molly's, we've limited the hours of operations, operation, even though our code allows till 11:00 PM, we're asking, so far Molly's has to stop serving outside by 10:00. He is-
Clear by 10:00.
Clear by 10:00. People have to be out of the patio by 10:00. In this case, Scott would like to continue to cert, to, not clear until 11:00, right? Which is our code, because there really aren't that many people that live downtown, and he doesn't, he's not going to have music, he doesn't believe it's going to disturb people, for instance, who live in the village center.
So I know some of these outdoor situations, they will have these large heating lamps, that's not a-
He hasn't proposed that.
... projected idea, is it?
Not at this point, he hasn't proposed that. Even though by code, you can have tables out there from November, you have to, you can have tables until November, and you can put them back up in April.
Is there a code restriction on outdoor heating lights? It would be a fire code, we'd have to address the propane type, if it's either electric heat, if it's using a propane heat, if it's using one of the salt torches that are on there, there's specific clarances, depending on the facade, be it basins or wood, for the fire code, it would be.
I mean-
There's also whether they could be tipped, they need to be secured more than likely by the fire department, so that's something we've not addressed, but it's something we strongly want to- But it's not contemplated, this right, this one, right?
Correct, my understanding is what's contemplated is in your drawing, because he's required by code to submit an accurate drawing.
Okay. The temporary approval that we could give, we can rescind that at any time, given the length of, within the length that we provide.
We can certainly, if that's not true, we can certainly put it into this motion right here, that we reserve the right to review it in three months or whatever.
Because this seems like a very well-thought-out plan-
Because this seems like a very well-thought-out plan. It's something that I think we should, worth a try, as long as we have the mechanisms in place that if it goes south for some unforeseen circumstance, we can take it away as well.
Right. And we could maybe put that into the motion. I'd just like to make sure that we go through these points to see what we want, went in there, Mark. I appreciate your comment.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. So are we okay with, with just having planters on either end?
Question. So these planters would extend out six feet from the wall, which is the same as what the tables and chairs are?
It's a good question. I don't know.
I mean, that's what he shows here. I'm just stating, unless there's something you know otherwise. So the planter box would extend six feet out from the building, how high, how high is the planter?
I don't believe, well, I don't believe it's in what he proposes.
Do we, should it be a certain height?
That's a good question. Michael, Bob, what do you think? I don't know if it, should, I mean, should it be? I, I don't know. I'm asking. Does the board have a preference? Because we can certainly stipulate that.
Well, normally they, they want it to be a visual barrier, but also slightly at or above the height of the resident, of the patron that's sitting at the table.
So, that would be?
Something, something in this regard.
Part of the photograph, part of the photograph is to provide it.
Yeah, yeah. That's an example, that's not his. Yeah, that's the general idea, yeah.
So, we could certainly put in here that the planters must be four feet?
Well, you say at least, I mean, with the table, I, I don't want it to be as great as that, but I don't want it to be six inches, so it's a trip that's certain.
Well, we could say they must be at least as high as the table.
That's fine.
With the planter itself as least as high as the table, and then plants coming out of that would make it higher. I mean, I, I just want to make sure that we, that when we go back to him, he knows exactly what we've said. I mean, I, I.
Anything that's reasonable, as long as, to trustee Shebets' point, it's not a trip as we consider.
I don't know that we need to specify that to that degree.
Okay. Well, let's decide what we want to specify, because we need to put it in the.
Can we, can we advocate that discretion of staff?
Poor Bob.
That's a, no, I think, I think it's a suggestion.
We don't understand what the issue is here. I think that would be a better shoulder height.
I think that would be a better way of doing it.
But that includes the plants, right?
Yeah.
So that.
So the height of the table, maybe, or?
You know what, I would just suggest, I think, you understand where the board's come from here, and so it's Bob care who will be enforcing these requirements, so.
I think that he should be told that the, that many people on the board would like it to, the plant, with the plants to be at least shoulder height. Right? So out of here, Mark, you, you want to let it go, right?
I'm, I'm agnostic.
You're agnostic. Make sure that you tell him Mark's agnostic on plant height.
And then these planters, these planters according to the diagram are in front of his business, so they, they don't approach obviously on the business side near our business. So this, are there, what's next to him? I can't picture it, are there doors?
Well, there's.
What are, what are the businesses on either side?
Well, one of them would be to the right of his front doors, because he wouldn't want to impede access to his front door, right?
And that's grumpy.
Yeah, but he would only want the planter to the right of the front, his front door, because otherwise people couldn't get in. And then the other side is anti-hammas.
So where Grumpy says there is, it wouldn't impact?
No, it wouldn't. And so he'd have to make sure that it doesn't get in the way of the window for Aunt Diana, I would assume.
The only thing that's at Grumpy's are tables that he didn't ask about. So it's kind of refreshing to actually have a business owner that's coming in and asking permission to put tables out instead of just doing it.
Most businesses.
So I think maybe we could abdicate some of these as, as my grand decisions.
Well, make it clear though, that, that Grumpy's has, has the village's permission to have those tables out there. He gets a temporary, what is his permit? He pays twenty-five dollars a year, so he has, that's not, he's not putting it out there.
We've never gotten a drawing like this, you think?
No, I'm just saying, I just want to make it clear that Grumpy's complies with the village's requirements for his tables out there.
Well, if he wants special use, he has to pay the thousand dollars to come to a plant commission meeting. Let's, let's, can we just finish this?
There's one difference between outdoor cafes and then with waitstaff. And then we have a separate ordinance that would take care of the new rest, the new, the old grumpy space and the new urbanly, urban bean. And there's a minor, a smaller fee because there is no waitstaff, it's not a sit-down restaurant, this is kind of a donut, donut and a coffee type situation. So there are two distinctions for outdoor dining. Full sit-down dining with perhaps alcohol or whatever, and then just the Fresh Express, old grumpy, and new urban bean for just the sit-down tables of coffee.
Thanks, Bob. And then the last two criteria are, do we want to impose any of the design criteria for this temporary use? The, if you were to come back for a full special use, and there are, you have to have the tables weighted a certain amount, and it has to blend with the downtown area, but I just want to make sure that we know.
I mean, I think we could feel pretty comfortable with Scott. He's, he hasn't done anything unachieving.
That's fine.
He does everything, he does it, he does it very well. And I would assume that we just shouldn't have any exception outside.
Okay. So let it go for the temporary. Then the last.
Wait, refresh my memory.
Oh, so Mike, if you turn back, sorry, if you turn back to.
No, 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 just a separate question about that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a requirement to pull the furniture in at night?
No, I don't think there is, but I think you'd probably have to be.
There is no requirement, but you said he wasn't going to bring it in at night.
He did say that.
He did not want to leave it outside. We never got as far as discussing whether he'd bring in the planter in and out at night, but he did say he was bringing the furniture inside at night.
But no, because Scott, for instance, don't they leave it out at, at Molly's all night?
They stack it out.
They stack it. And again, that's private property.
So do we want, I guess a question, do we want to require?
At this point, for a temporary use?
Do we want to require it?
Oh, sure. I mean, if, if we want it off the sidewalk, he'd probably have to be, given the fact that a planter was lifted at one point, we probably.
He couldn't lift a planter off the sidewalk.
No, not those planters. I meant the planters from Fred was stolen.
Well, and given the fact that he has recently reduced his hours of operation, it might be to the village's benefit to not have that furniture out there.
Because people would use it at lunch.
Right. And there's no longer.
All right. So another condition is that the furniture be pulled in at the end of the day. Okay. And then last is the length of the, of the temporary permit. The, he, because he came to us in September, it's already the end of the year, and he wants to be able to try it for an entire season. As Michael said, twelve months for a temporary use is a long time.
Well, why is it, what's the distinction between a temporary and a permanent? I mean, so is it, is it temporary that you just don't have to go through as much?
You don't have, you don't have to pay. We might want to charge him twenty-five dollars, which is what everybody else does.
Well, how much staff time would be put against this? I mean, that's what I want to know. We just had a long discussion a couple of months ago about reclaiming staff time under permit fees, right? For private residents that is.
Right. The, the difference would be, to answer your first question, Mark, if, if you were to apply for a special use, a permit on special use, then you would have to pay the thousand dollars, and it would come to the plant commission, and there would be a special.
Public hearing.
Public hearing on a special use. So that's what the thousand dollars covers. For a temporary use, we don't require, and, and then for outdoor eating, you pay on an annual basis twenty-five dollars. For a temporary, we don't require anything.
Well, do we have, my understanding, part of the reason you charge a thousand dollars is because there's a significant.
That's correct. And there's the mailing cost and the delivery cost, all that.
So do we, are we incurring some staff time?
Well, we've incurred meeting staff time and incurred, incurred analysis, and this is actually the second time the plant commission talked about it, and after the first meeting, Bob had to go back to Mr. Zimmer and say, would you please provide a drawing and additional information? So, you may recall, Mark, that this started at least a year ago with the bump out. I'm not talking to the microphone with, I'm going to get yelled at if I don't talk in the microphone with, with the bump out, so.
I, I would, I would make the argument that we don't have many tools to attract businesses and, or retain certain businesses, and this is an instance where I feel it's kind of up to, to the village to work with a business who wants to, to try and bring more traffic into the downtown. And I, I feel that it's, at this point, it's not, I don't feel it would be appropriate to assess a fee. At the point where he feels that this is working and he wants to move forward, then yes, then he submits it with the fee.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And the other thing, too, just to be clear about the timing of this, you know, he hasn't waited until September to come to us. He, he actually came in June with this idea to Peter. And we have been talking about the boardwalk idea since two thousand nine. So this is, this is not something that just came out of the blue. In terms of the timing, since, I mean, since it's taken this long to finally get it before us since June, I mean, I would say that we should, we should consult Mr. Zimmer and ask him when he would like.
He wants a year.
But from when?
From now.
Well, then we should give him a year from now. If that's, if that's his business decision, then we should try to make it work for him.
I, I agree. I think we should give him a year from now. I do think we should charge him twenty-five dollars, just to keep, it's minimal, but all the other people that have tables outside pay twenty-five dollars. It's, it's just, just to keep everybody in the same, so I just, but yeah. Do we know, is he intending to use this this year?
He, he indicated he'd like to, right, Bob?
I was, I was never made for it.
Well, just in the meeting, it's, he wanted it for a year, starting right away.
So, we are talking about granting this starting immediately?
Yes.
For how long?
For twelve months is what he's requesting.
So until next September first or something?
But he will be required to shut down in November and not open until March, correct? Like everybody else?
Correct. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So he's really only getting.
I'm sorry?
He's really only getting.
Two more months.
Two more months and then April.
So he's, he's required to shut down when?
And then November to the end of March, I believe.
From November first to March to April first, no, December first to March.
Well, what I would suggest then is start now and go through that period to the end, to where he has to take them out next year. Give him a full business season to try this.
Michael Mars, any problem with that duration?
I don't care if anybody else can quote.
To, go to when?
Go to, to the.
For all of next year.
Give him fifteen months? I, no, I would not support that. I would give him the twelve months, but, you know.
Well, I think it depends on points, you know, what are you going to do in the middle of September, say I say it's over? I would, I would hope, I would hope, I would hope that the owner will decide well before the middle of next year whether this is worth it. He's got an opportunity to try it now for a while, he's got an opportunity to try it in the spring and early summer. I would hope that he makes a conclusion that this is what he wants. And at that point, it's incumbent on him to then work with the village on some type of a permanent, which is, this is not a permanent solution, right? So, I, to your point, Ben, so I don't, I, I don't like fifteen months either, it's, I don't think it's a long time. However, I do want to cooperate with this request. This dovetails perfectly with what we're talking about with downtown planning and, and putting a buzz down there and drawing people, and I think this is a step in the right direction. Whether it's the right solution, that's why it's only temporary. This might be the wrong solution, but it's, I think, a good start.
And I think it shows other businesses potentially coming into town that we're willing to work with them also, on sort of a.
So the question, are we, we're just, the only log right here is whether this should end on September first or November first?
I would.
Well, as a business person, he would certainly know before that.
Well, that's my, so then, then what their question makes, so September first.
So September first, September first, okay.
For clarity, the, the season runs from April first through November thirtieth for every, for the outdoor.
So that gives until November thirtieth, and then next year until September first.
Correct. All right. So, I believe we have answered all the questions. We agree on the three points that Mr. Mars presented. Twelve-month dur, duration. Bob will work with him on the planters. The suggestion is that the planters be shoulder height, including the plants, and that at this point, we are not requiring any, that the design criteria be fit, be in place. We are asking a twenty-five dollar annual fee.
And, and the tables be pulled in at night.
And the tables be, thank you very much. And the tables be pulled in at night.
And chairs. And if I just may, my one concern about the planter at shoulder height is people coming out of the business and looking to the left, children on bicycles, whatever. So that's, if it comes down below shoulder length, that's what I'm thinking about now, that it might be too high for my side.
It's your call, Bob.
Okay. Take it back.
It may not be shoulder height.
Take it back then at the.
It's just a visual.
Okay. So it's at your discretion then? All right, Michael.
If I could, the one other thing the board had talked about was the ability to retract the permission if.
Oh, yeah. Do we want, yeah, absolutely.
Does anybody have a comment on that?
No.
It's temporary.
I think we have completed the resolution at this point.
Yes, that took far longer than I was hoping for, so thank you.
Is there a second that I recall?
Ben seconded it.
Excuse me?
Ben hit.
Ben, okay. So we have a motion by trustee Sussman and a second by trustee Salz to approve this request for the outdoor dining for Chuchu Cafe. Is there any further discussion? If not, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Salz.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shebets.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Thank you, and that is approved, and thank you, Bob, for working on this and working with him prospectively on this also. Trustee Sussman, do you have anything further?
No, the plant commission meeting for tomorrow night was canceled.
Okay. So with that, we will move on to finance personnel and management. Trustee Sachi.
Thank you. The first item I have this evening is a resolution of the village of Riverside to approve an amendment to the village-administered section four five seven deferred compensation plan to permit loans. The village is the plan administrator of a section four five seven deferred compensation plan for employees. This plan is administered by ICMA Retirement Corporation. The village offers this plan to all employees, and employees may elect to make contributions. This plan fosters retirement savings and is of no cost to the village, a hundred percent of the cost is paid by the employee participant. Currently, participants cannot retrieve funds that were contributed on a pre-tax basis unless there is an economic hardship. It is difficult for a participant to meet the established factors to receive approval for an economic hardship. In current economic times, not offering a loan program can deter employees from saving in deferred compensation plan. The purpose of the loan program is to provide options for employees should they need to retrieve their funds. ICMA RC offers a loan program for employees that wish to take a short-term loan up to fifty thousand dollars from their deferred compensation. There is a one-time loan origination fee of $50 charged at the time of the loan application. There is an annual maintenance fee of $75 charged yearly for an outstanding loan. The duration of the repayment would not exceed five years. The interest rate of these loans will be based on prime plus a half a percent. ICMA RC charges the employee participant any applicable fees, administers the loan process, and monitors repayment. I motion that this board approve a resolution authorizing an amendment to the village-administered Section 457 Deferred Compensation Plan to Permit Loans.
Second. So a motion by trustee Sachi and a second by trustee Shebets. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, Kathy, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Salz.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shebets.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Thank you, and that is approved.
Mr. President, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Jessica, what if the loan isn't repaid? What happens?
ICMA will then issue a ten-year loan for some reason, a separate component. The administrative element is completely absent, so-
Okay, so you don't have to go after it, am I right? Yeah.
All set?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to our financial planning discussion now. And the way we're going to handle this is Finance Director Jessica Francis will step up to the podium and give us a mid-year financial review. Then she will give us a 10-year capital improvement plan review. Then she will give us a five-year financial forecast plan. And then she will give us a presentation of the police pension actuary report. And after that, she will give us a presentation of the Illinois Municipal Retirement Rate for 2013. After she's done with that, staff requires that we give some direction. They have some questions for us this evening. We'll circle back and take those questions and answer them, hopefully, for the staff so they can proceed with their 2013 budget planning. Go ahead, Jessica.
Well, even before Jessica begins, I just wanted to clarify. The purpose of the meeting this evening is really to provide staff with a general overview of the direction that the board would like us to take in repairing the budget that we will then bring back to you. It, it's really not intended to be a particular line item discussion. If the board feels that you need, we need to discuss certain projects that are identified in the CIP in order for you to reach the, the step on giving us direction, then all of the department heads are here and more than willing to take any questions to assist you in your formulation of your, of your policy decision.
And I think that the nature, the questions that are, that are outlined in the way that, so this is not a discussion of the details. That will come at, when we actually approve budgets, or not approve, but discuss.
I'll do the mid-year review first, since I've already provided the June financials and I actually have preliminary July financials, which will be distributed to the board at the end of this week. So I'll go over that while we're waiting my lovely PowerPoint presentation. As of June of 2012, year-to-date, the general fund revenue is at 54% of the budget. Obviously, we've completed 50% of the, of the fiscal year at that point in time. Year-to-date, general fund expense is 52% of the budget. Property taxes, year-to-date, is 1.9 million, and that's 243,918 less than year-to-date last year. And that's more or less just the fluctuation with the county distributing property tax, also people paying late, et cetera. But it's anticipated that we'll receive the entire levy as budgeted in our, for fiscal year 2012. As of July 2012, the village has completed 58.3% of our fiscal year. The village has received 2.4 million, or 69% of the revenue budgeted for property tax. We're right on track to receive the 100% by the, we anticipate actually by the beginning of October to be at 100% of our property tax revenue budget. The general fund year-to-date revenue is 5.5%, or 68% of the budget. General fund year-to-date expense is 4.53 million, or 60% of our budget. Okay. The water fund, year-to-date revenue is, as of July of 2012, is 2 million, or 77% of the budget. During fiscal year 2012, the village received the final reimbursement for the, the projects completed in the final, in conjunction with the IEPA loan program. So that was that very large undertaking as it relates to water main infrastructure replacement that the village undertook. There were certain reimbursements that we had to submit, and there was approximately $400,000 that we received during fiscal year 2012. So now we're essentially made whole, and then we'll just go on our loan repayment plan. Year-to-date expense is 1.277 million, or 67% of the budget for the water fund. As of July 2012, all other funds. Perfect. Year-to-date revenue for E911 is 75,000, or 33% of the budget. However, the budget, the revenue budget includes 78,000 of a transfer that's going to be from the general fund to the E911 fund as repayment for the wireless alarm system. Year-to-date expense is 34,000, or 46% of the budget. MFT fund, year-to-date revenue is 120, 125,000, or 24% of the budget. Budget includes a grant reimbursement that the village has not yet received. That is part of the, the green parking lot initiative that we've undertaken that will be submitted at the, the end of the project. So that's why those funds have not yet been received or accounted for. Year-to-date expense is 43,000, or 4.61% of the budget. And this is where the, the green parking lot initiative comes in. This is currently outstanding, the purchase orders issued in the amount of 412, 412,000, or a total of our expense plus encumbrances, which is the equivalent of our purchase orders, is 48% of the budget, and this is as of July of 2012. Capital projects, year-to-date revenue is 135,000, or 33% of the budget. Year-to-date expense is 69,000, or 20% of the budget. Parking lot fund, year-to-date revenue is 101,000, or 29% of the budget. Once again, this includes that green initiative with the parking lot, so that grant reimbursement has not yet been received. The village obviously expends the money, and then we submit for reimbursement once we have all the invoices in totality. Year-to-date expense is 240, 242,000, or 86% of the budget. And the, the 187,000 is attributable to the parking lot. And then our year-end projections, we have for both the general fund and the water and sewer fund illustrated here. The general fund, we're projecting to be at 119,000, whereas the water fund, and this includes that 400,000 that we received right on the onset of the fiscal year, then includes that 400,000, so we'll be right at a little higher than 1 million with regard to the water and sewer fund. The motor fuel tax, you'll see that we're running at a deficit, and it's just based on how the, the 2012 budget was set up with regard to MFT. As we get into the discussion of CIP, we're structuring it a little bit differently as it relates to the rotation of streets for the capital projects. We have the non-home rule sales tax that is strictly used for street infrastructure and the MFT. And so now we'll be rotating for the expense to be, be essentially out of the non-home rule sales tax until we're no longer operating at a deficit in MFT. And then E911, we're also projecting a 111,000 surplus as well. Parking lot fund, $11,000 surplus, and the capital projects fund will be at a deficit at 109,000. And those revenues that are attributable in the capital projects are both the non-home rule sales tax and any grants that we've anticipated and/or received. And then we have the capital improvement plan. Historically, the Village of Riverside has done a five-year capital improvement plan. When I came in, I actually recommended a 10-year, simply from the perspective of being a small, non-home rule community. You're real restricted in what you can do and what you can't do with regard to revenue sources and expenses and issuance of debt. And so I thought this would provide the board a greater perspective long-term of those items that are on a rotation schedule of 10 to 20 years, because you wouldn't see it necessarily on a five-year, but a 10-year gives you a greater perspective. So the purpose of a capital plan is to provide accountability in planning at the department level. And as you see, all of our department heads are here this evening. Provide accountability, provide a tracking mechanism for current and future needs, provide the prioritization of current and future capital, develop short-term and long-term financing schedules, align capital projects with long-term and short-term goals of the community as a whole, and also provide maintenance of the community infrastructure. And as I stated previously, the reasons for a 10-year plan for Riverside is that we are small. We're predominantly residential. We have our limitations in revenue, limitations in debt issuances, when and how we can issue it. Property taxes predominantly what we receive as our revenue source for funding our operations. Opportunities to evaluate grant opportunities for future projects that we have listed in our capital plan, and also provides the board with long-term capital needs of the community. And this did not come out very well. But as it is included in your packets, it's the schedule. It's a summary by pla, a summary of the plan by department in fiscal year. And the board should look at this as more or less a document that will continue to evolve. There will be certain items that will be reprioritized and given years will be eliminated, eliminated based on grant opportunities. And so this is more or less a holistic view, if, if you will, of the village's capital needs over the next 10 years, subject to change. And it's prioritized based on department and the fiscal year, what those respective dollar amounts are. And then we have the listed, listing of the unfunded capital. It looks like we experienced a little technical difficulty. This does not project very well. However, it's just showing the respective capital-related items and the potential funding mechanisms by year. So you have the 2013 through 2022. And then also what is included in there are items that have been designated historically as unfunded. So we don't want that to necessarily drop off our radar, but we want to have it included and on our radar in case future grant opportunities should arise. And the other one, this is not coming out very well, and I do apologize, is capital by year and by department. So it essentially illustrates the previous tables that were in the, the handouts provided to the village board. And here's more or less the detail as it relates with funding by source and by respective year. How will this plan be utilized? This plan will be instrumental in formulating the capital needs for all funds in future years. This plan will be updated annually by department heads. This plan will continue to be modified as the needs of the community change. This document provides the framework, so we should never feel like these items will be the items that will be absolute in those respective given fiscal years. This document provides the framework for future capital, but is subject to change, as I stated. And next, we have our financial, five-year financial forecast. The financial, the forecast provides a five-year outlook as it relates to revenue and expense for all funds. This plan demonstrates revenue trends and local usage patterns. For example, water consumption and permit issuances. The tax levy is based on the CPI, which for next fiscal year will be 2.96%. State shared revenues are based on estimates provided by the Illinois Municipal League. And our financial forecast, in just brief summary, is the salaries. For the purpose of this financial forecast, salaries were based at 1.5%. Employee benefits, based on various trend with health insurance, we actually took the less aggressive approach and did the 8%. We're part of a pool, so obviously that's subject to change, and we have a little bit more control over it than perhaps others. Pension costs, 10% increase for IMRF, and that's based on the phase-in rate that we're currently utilizing, 4% for police pension. Services and commodities, a flat 1, 1.25%, and then liability insurance, 5%. And once again, this did not come out very well, so I do apologize. Well, we can also post this PowerPoint online for those at home that want to view it, because it's just not projecting very well. It provides essentially our year-end projection showing our surplus, the current budget balance, and then also five years based on those relative assumptions that were previously outlined for salaries, expense, services, commodities, pension costs, et cetera. This is in summary format. You are also provided the detailed format as well. Next is our police pension fund. And you are also provided the draft from the village actuary, Tim Sharp, of our actuarial report for police pension. In fiscal year 2011, the net pet, plan assets decreased from 7.9 to 7.6 million. The investment rate of return was a negative 0.85%. Annual payroll increased by 5.4%. However, we need to remember that we added on that additional officer, and that's what essentially kicked up that rate. Otherwise, it would have been excluding that additional officer, it only would have been 0.9%. Based on last year's actuarial assumptions, the, the recommendation for the tax levy is to increase from 594,000 to 614, or a 3.2% increase. Any increases by, any changes with regard to our actuarial assumptions by a quarter of percent would essentially increase the levy for that particular portion by approximately 30,000. And then I also have a graphic, and I really hope this comes out a little bit better than others. And it just shows you essentially the rate of return. There is much volatility, obviously, given the current climate with the police pension fund. We did a trend line essentially showing a linear of what our rate of return would have been, and it's approximately 3.6. Tim has also provided what our five-year is, and it's 2.53. Our 10-year is 3.95 with regard to our rate of return. And currently, our assumption is 7.75. So there are some years where we're well above that, and there's others where it's significantly under. We're in, they, the police pension fund is an actively managed fund, so they do have an investment advisor and various managers that review their various investment options, but there is some volatility there currently. And then I have IMRF. For the general fund, currently in 2012, we are utilizing the phase-in rate. The 2013, we have the option of either the phase-in rate, or we could do it at the required contribution. Those are the two options that essentially IMRF has provided the village. If we continue to do the phase-in rate, then it would increase incrementally by 10% every year until essentially IMRF is made whole. And then on the next slide, it just shows what the village's annual contributions have been in totality, the percent change for those respective years, the years in which we did the phase-in, what those rates were, and what the annually required contribution were in those respective years. All right, so now that we've gotten through all that information, what are the benefits of a financial forecast of a CIP? It essentially provides the framework for an upcoming budget cycle and for future cycles. Complete transparency with regard to capital projects and equipment need to the board as a whole. Obviously, staff deals with it on a day-to-day basis, but actually putting it down and making staff both accountable and providing that information to the board takes it to a whole level. It's proactive financial approach, and it facilitates discussion regarding revenue, expense, capital, service levels, and expectations, not only of the board, but also for residents as a whole. And with that, I will turn it over to trustee Sachi to discuss the issues to consider.
Kathy, may I ask a question? Have you set dates yet for the 12 days to fall?
We have it tentatively for September. That's our target. However, I know that the board would like it in advance, and so I don't know if we'll be able to make that target at this point in time.
My concern is that you have trustees who plan to trip, because they don't know any date schedules. So you just keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
I don't get to plan trips. Yeah, I just have trustees plan trips. Trustee Sachi, I think she pumped it back in. I think she did. Thank you, Jessica.
Sure.
Thank you, Jessica.
Absolutely.
The wealth of information she presented, and also that she provided under our board handles.
Absolutely.
Before we get to the nine issues to consider, there are some issues to consider in the capital improvement plan between two. So if you look just inside a couple pages, I don't want to want to concern funding for the capital improvement plan. So you also see the attached list of capital projects coming up in 2013. As you all know, we've been, we've been utilizing existing funding that's been in the capital improvement plan the last few years, and we've been deferring some projects. It's not something we can do forever. We also have discussed in the past in various meetings on capital about the possibility of assigning a revenue source to, to the capital improvement plan. And tonight, I would like us, I would like to see if the board would agree to assign the general sales tax over to the capital improvement plan. This, I know it says here in the, in the summary sheet here that there's volatility in it. There really is not a lot of volatility in that revenue source. And it would give, it would give the, give the staff a pretty good idea of how much they can expect in there from sales tax. The last few years, the last four or five years, it's varied between 250 to about 300,000. And this past year, it's projected to be, I believe, 279,000, right, Jessica? Yes, right around 279, 280. So my recommendation to the board would be to assign that revenue source over to capital. I know, Joe, you even mentioned that the la- I think in June when we discussed this. And it is, I think it's the right thing to do at this point. In terms of then the list, once staff gets the direction now of how much money they can expect in that fund, then I'd like them to come back with a prioritized list of the 2013 projects when we have our general budget discussions. And at that point, if we decide we want to do more than what the, the funding is allowing, at that point, we can consider a transfer from unassigned reserves if we, if we, if we wish. So that would be my recommendation this evening. And we can open that up for discussion.
Any comment? So then we have a, go ahead.
I mean, we've always struggled with how to get a recurring revenue stream for capital. If I remember correctly, the last few years, we haven't needed that. What did you say? That is like 250 to 300?
It's been 250 to 300. And even if we had done that in the past, we still would have, would have operated in the black for the last few years.
So we have a suggestion of allocating the sales tax collections to the capital projects fund rather than general fund.
Now, I just have a question. Mine just seems to me that the first question, I, I, in terms of flow of answering it, then we need to understand what we're doing with the fund balance before we designate, I mean, does it sort of go from broad to more narrow?
What do you mean?
Discussion. The first question that, that Jessica poses is what do we want to do about fund balance policy?
Were you addressing question number five, trustee Sachi said?
I was addressing number five. I was, I was addressing one in the issues to consider under the capital improvement plan. So I'm not really in that, although, once we, if we do this, that answers five under those issues to consider.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? Your voice doesn't carry on.
If we answer this item number one in the capital improvement plan issues to consider, that's the same as five in the, in that fiscal year 2013 issues to consider. So that, actually, this is, this question is asked in two different places tonight. You follow?
Yeah, I guess in a write-up, one of the questions Jessica was asking about was the permanent, the question, you had stuff really up here, right?
The, the issues to consider were listed out in the, the CIP, and then I essentially summarized them in regard to the board write-up. So these questions are taken from the board write-up. But there is questions with regard to issues to consider following the overview of the agenda.
Excuse me, Jessica, would you come up here? Maybe you just want to stay there for a few minutes here, because side, so the residents at home can hear your voice.
Um, the issues to consider that trustee Sachi is referencing is essentially at the end of the capital improvement plan. With regard to that, this is more of summer, summary format as it relates to the agenda write-up, and that's where these questions were essentially taken directly from.
Do you need the fund balance discussion to each of them?
Well, as trustee Sachi said, this is somewhat covered with regard to the issues to consider with CIP.
Okay.
Well, I, I, three and four, we should be, we should be, we should be.
Wait, wait, wait.
What?
This is not a free-for-all on the questions here, is it?
Well, there's five of them up there.
Yeah, well, we'll take them in order. Let trustee Sachi at least lead the discussion here.
Right. I, I just wanted to start out, I mean, the reason I was taking this first was because on the agenda, the capital improvement plan would.
Was listed first.
Yes, is listed first. So, so item, so B, the 10-year capital improvement plan, under issues to consider, this was the first item. It happens to also be asked in question five on the screen.
Got it. Okay.
So it's being asked in two different places. So I was taking it first in the order that it appears in the agenda.
I have a question for the topic.
If you look at the five-year financial forecast that Jessica has provided us, it shows over the five-year period, a kind of cumulative deficit in the operating fund, in the general fund of like 1.4 million dollars. And, and that is assuming the revenue from the sales tax. So if we take the sales tax out of our general fund, we're actually going to double that to like a 2.6 million dollar deficit over the five years.
Can I just bring?
Can, can Lani answer my question?
Pardon me?
So what, I mean, how do you, I mean, I mean, we're actually increasing our deficit.
Lani, would you mind if I address that?
Go ahead.
I mean, we, we get five-year projections every year, and staff does the, the best job that they can do trying to look into their crystal ball into the future and probably give a more of a lean toward a worst-case scenario rather than a best-case scenario, or a conservative scenario.
Revenue is more conservative, whereas expense, we lean a little bit to more of worst-case scenario, for example, with the services commodities.
So, so when I came on the board in 2009, I believe the five-year projection said we were going to be out of money in 2013. That is not the case. In fact, we have a 3.7, 3.8 million dollar unassigned reserve surplus at this point.
Correct.
So that is, and I'm, and I'm not dismissing the work you did at all. I, I just want to point out that those projections tend to be, again, more cloudier than sunnier. And, and I think the, the board has done a good job managing finances, as evidenced by where we are today versus where we were 2009 for five-year projections. So, and, and if you look, Ben, historically, at, at where we've been the last three or four, five years, we would have been just fine without the, that sales tax revenue. So I, you know, I'm for having, finally having a recurring revenue stream for capital and using the sales tax for that. If we can always switch back if, if.
Which, which can be reassessed in.
Right, exactly.
And, and you know, I mean, I know that the recommendation there was to use 75 percent as an option, and I'm saying use, I'm saying put 100 in there. And I know that that puts more pressure on staff to, to do the general fund budget. And if, if the board wishes to consider an option other than 100 percent, I'm certainly willing to, you know, to listen to what the, to how the rest of the trustees feel about that.
What do you mean by 100 percent?
I mean, 100 percent of the sales tax revenue.
What were you proposing?
I'm proposing 100 percent. So, but if, if the board wants to do a different percentage, we can, you know, we can certainly give direction to, to do that. But right now, just to open the discussion, I'd like to see us do 100 percent of it in there.
Well, my, my concern is the five-year forecast that I don't discount.
I don't think anybody discounted it, Ben.
It sure sounded like we just did.
Jessica, I didn't mean to discount it if you took it that way.
Because for, I mean, for the folks who don't have it in front of them, in 2013, it's 100, these are projected deficits, operating deficits out of the general fund. For 2013, it's 194,000. For 2014, it's 211,000. Then it goes to 273, 341, 416,000. So even if you apply this year's projected surplus, we're still at like 1.3, which is almost exactly what the sales tax revenue would generate over, so that would double it. Now, it seems, so, I mean, I like the idea of having the, the funding source also. I've always liked the idea of having a funding source. The, I think the advantage to the first option, though, of establishing a, a transfer of any surplus we have at the end of a fiscal year, is that that, that option actually gives staff an incentive to hold costs, because they know that any surplus that's being generated is going to be applied to their capital needs.
Here's a problem with that, in my view. If we had had a firm policy in effect to transfer the surplus, which is like what, what I believe the previous board had that policy, a couple of years ago, you would have had to have transferred 1.2 million over to capital, because that wasn't what you ended up with. That was the year that we forgave the loans on the lots and that sort of thing. So talk about volatility, you have a real volatility there. And there might be years where you don't even have a surplus. So, and again, if you remember, I mean, I know your, the five-year forecast is certainly something that, you know, we all have to think about for, for the, for future, when surpluses are going to decline and turn into deficits. So, but, but if you remember the email that Jessica sent the company that, that this is a very conservative five-year forecast. So, I mean, we certainly hope that revenues exceed those forecasts and that expenditures come in less. I know even Jessica, when you and I met to discuss this, just, you know, a couple, one of the line items that pops into my head was, there was a $12,000, I believe, in, in.
Was the formula copied over incorrectly? Is it correct?
Yeah. So, and, and so that's going to go away. And I mean, no, that's just a minor thing. But, but there are, hopefully, things in that that are not going to come to pass. It's a very kind of, not necessarily worst case, but, but we certainly, I know when Jessica prepared this, she certainly was being extremely conservative in, in presenting this forecast to us. So, you know, we hope that necessarily, you know, those deficits may or may not occur. And, and again, like Mark said, I mean, you know, you start projecting too far out, and, and it certainly, you know, gets less and less reliable the farther out you project. So I, I think, you know, I still think we should go ahead and do this this evening. If it doesn't work, you can always go back to doing it a different way. But, you know, I, I don't think, you know, we can't just keep running, running it down to zero. We, I, I, I think it's time to, I think it's time to assign the revenue source to it, and, and I hope that, that a majority of the board agrees.
Well, we've always been looking for something to use as a source, correct? And this is the first, the first idea that I've heard that, that perhaps might, might work.
You know, I, I gotta tell you, I get foggy here, because I talked about establishing a revenue source for this last year, and you looked at me like, no, we need maximum flexibility, no, there's no revenue source. Now all of a sudden, this is the, you know, this has been a calling down from God. You know.
So do you still want to establish a revenue source?
Well, I don't think, I don't think the calling is from that individual. The calling is from staff. The staff's looking for some type of number to work with for budget purposes for 2013. I think that's what this would, would do.
Excuse me. For budget purposes, what you look at is what our capital needs are for 2013, and make a transfer out of our undesignated reserves to cover those capital expenditures. If something is, if the roof is going to collapse, then fix it. If the roof is going to collapse, but we only have 240, and it's going to cost us 350, so the idea is, oh, you know, we're not going to fix it. So I want a realistic idea of what we need to spend in capital and then fund it from our undesignated reserves. We have money that is, that we collect from taxes from residents, and we sit on it. Is that, is that, is that the right thing to do, is just sit on a pile of money? Or should that money be, be used to plan for the betterment of this village and, and take care of the issues and the infrastructure that we have? And, and allow the 240 that's in our, the, the utility tax and the sales tax to continue to go into general fund, continue on, and then whatever we need for, for, for capital improvement, make that transfer and do it. And look forward and have this stuff done, instead of looking backwards.
Mr. President? I would like to expand on just a second, also explain why I had wanted to go to the first question.
I don't understand why this is now.
That was actually in our packet, on news, because I agree with Joe that we have been accumulating levy dollars and not spending them. The way the process works is we put together a.
Did you want to share that?
I was just struck that suddenly having this incredible surplus is now an issue. It's a problem. I mean, we went from four years ago saying we need a tax increase, we're going to lay people off, and we're going to close the fire station, we're going to do all this stuff because we're out of money. Now we've got almost $4 million, and suddenly this is, now this is a problem. This is a mismanagement.
I'm not saying it's, nobody's saying it's a problem, Mark. Just because we're disagreeing within how you want to spend it, we're not saying it's a problem. I'm just, if you'll allow me, I'd like to explain how I think that this, that we might want to allocate this money, instead of your going back to five or six years ago continuously. I would really just appreciate that.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So I, I look at this as, and, and some of that money, by the way, almost a million of it, was money that, that this board chose to transfer from one fund to the unrestricted dollars. So while there is a surplus, 25 percent of it is accounted for by closing one account and rolling it into another. But what I was going to say is that we set a budget and we levy against that budget. We, we have been levying the maximum amount that we can, taking advantage or not taking, or taking advantage of this in recent years, a very, very small consumer price index. But we have been levying this money, and for a variety of reasons, we have not been spending all of the levy, even though we've said to residents, we're levying this money because we need it for the budget. Now we haven't been spending all this money for a variety of reasons. One of them is because we have excellent staff, and the staff has been able to find cost savings for us. Another is that we have been deferring capital expenditures, and in some instances, operating rate expenditures, operating fund expenditures. And so we've been accumulating this money at the same time that we're telling residents that we need the money on an annual basis. And I, and then we see from the projections from our staff that we're going to need dollars for capital, and that we're going to need dollars for, actually, the operating budget as well, for the general fund. Now, I personally. Now, I personally agree that we should have a conservative budget. I would much rather be surprised on the positive side and add to that, Mark, than be aghast that we didn't budget enough. There are always emergencies, I understand that. But for the most part, it's better to be conservative than it is not to be conservative. Having said that, it seems to me that this accumulation of the levy dollars that we committed to residents is necessary, needs to be allocated to where it is going to be necessary. We know we're gonna need dollars for capital, and we know regardless of the, of the exact year, but, but even looking at Jessica's conservative recommendations, that we're going to need it for the general fund, for the operating fund as well. And again, this gets to why I wanted to discuss the general, the, the surplus, the undesignated dollars. I personally believe that this money, because we know we're going to need to spend it, needs to go into the line items. One needs to be a capital line item, and the other actually needs to be either a separate line item that says, starting in two thousand and fifteen or wherever, operating funds, or we need to review our policy on reserves and increase that twenty-five percent reserve rate to acknowledge that we're going to be using some of the surplus for operations.
Can I summarize what you're saying?
Sure.
How it would impact, how it would impact our budget discussions later in the year?
I would like to use the money from the-
So you would then have staff come away from this saying, just present your capital needs to the board in September, October, and at that point, the board will review those items and one-off decide which ones the fund, which ones not.
Yeah, and I think what Lonnie's-
As opposed to-
What Lonnie's saying.
That's kinda, that's kinda what I said, only-
But, and, and I would say, Lonnie, to, to your point, whether it comes from the tax dollars or the same amount comes from below the line, it's, it's the money. But I tend to agree more with Joe that if there are capital needs and we know there are capital needs, we should look at funding them when we have been collecting money from residents and not spending it, but saying we're gonna spend it.
And, 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 well-
It's the transparency issue.
I don't go around saying we're gonna spend it, but, but, um-
What, Mark?
How's that transparency?
Because we know that we collected the money, we know we are, from projections, that there's a strong possibility we'll be needing this money to cover operating expenses and capital expenses. It is a transparency issue.
No, that's, it's all fully disclosed.
Yeah.
Transparency implies that something's being, being hidden.
But in terms of what, in terms-
No, in terms of budgeting transparency.
As Jessica said, one of the purposes of a budget is to plot, to provide transparency to residents. And when we know that there are impending costs and we don't acknowledge that by putting it in the budget, then I think there is an issue about transparency.
So, did I summarize where you're at? And you, you interrupt me if, if it's not clear because you're, this is directional to me. You would like the board, the staff to come away with direction, just present a capital list at the budget meetings.
Correct.
And we'll just decide at that point, as opposed to giving them a source of money at this point, which is sales tax that trustee Saatchi proposed.
I was saying, give them that as a baseline, and then let them prioritize-
Okay, right.
Prioritize the list, come back to us with it, and then if we want to, then we will decide how many of those things over and above the baseline that we gave them from the sales tax revenue and from the, from the funds that are there, that we wanna add in.
So you're both saying the same thing.
Pretty much.
I mean, you're gonna look at the capital items in, in September, October, and decide where to, where to fund, what to fund, not to fund. Difference being trustee Saatchi is saying, give staff direction that you're going to get two hundred and fifty million.
You're gonna get that now, plus you have so much in there now. So, give us back a prioritized list of the, of the capital projects that you wanna do in 2013, and then the board will consider funding more of those.
So, so did Joe-
Out of reserves.
So then to Joe's, let's, let's say, first they're arguing with you that, so we tell them, you're gonna get two hundred and twenty-two million, so come back and prioritize 2013. So they come back and they prioritize, and they say we need one point seven million dollars. Where do you get the other one point five million?
Who said we're gonna give them one point five million more?
Well, you would get an undesigned reserves, which is exactly what trustee- So if the board determines it's necessary, that's what the reserve is there for.
It, it, we will decide from that point which, how many more projects we wanna fund out of undesigned reserves.
So why give them any policy direction at all, Lonnie? You're not setting policy.
Because that way, they, they have this year and going forward, they, they have, there's a revenue source that's putting money in there that they know can cover annually recurring things like sidewalks, et cetera.
Do you have a point of view, since you're preparing a budget?
I'm, I'm happy that the board is considering a revenue source for CIP. Lonnie, trustee Saatchi, I, I think I've made my point. My position is that I would not be in favor of taking the sales tax dollars and moving that over to fund the CIP, only in that by doing that, you're directly affecting the general fund with what staff has to do. We will not then need to come up with two hundred and seventy-six thousand, what we're projecting for next year. And that means we have to cut in other places, and there is nowhere else for me to cut. The departments are at bare bone minimums, and it would just be extremely difficult for me to bring back to you a balanced budget where I'm gonna have to come up with an additional two hundred and seventy-five plus dollars to get to that point. My, my recommendation would be, which has been what I've been recommending all along, that you take a portion, even though I'd like to see all of it, but if not, a portion of that end-of-year surplus, and, and that is your funding source. I know there is volatility to that, and I agree, but I'd much rather see that avenue rather than using the, the sales tax dollars.
I have a, I'm sorry, question. What, in your mind, what is the difference between those two? I mean, they're dollars, no matter where they come from. How, how do you?
Well, we use, we use that, that sales tax revenue to help determine what services we provide to the community. If we have two hundred and seventy-six, and I know that the five-year forecast may, may, the numbers have changed, and, and even though at one point it was showing that we were gonna be out of money, but, and, and now we have that money, and we do budget for worst-case scenarios. That, that is our role, that, that is one way for us to ensure that, that at the end of the year, we have it put in for something that realistically, because of the economic situation that, that we are in, won't be there to fund. But it, it will have a direct impact on services because there's, I, I mean, our department had struggled in, in even coming up with the year-end projections. We, we cut a lot just so that we could get a surplus at the end of the year. And, and that is a, a reflection of their ability to kind of extend the life of, of certain things or services where, that I feel if, if we have to take a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar hit on the budget that I'm gonna be bringing to you, will reflect some personnel costs, reductions in personnel, because that's the only place to take the money from.
But, well, just one follow-up. I, I know that that kinda gives us, I mean, should you do that, that kinda gives us an idea of how drastic a cut might be, and then we can reconsider that. And I know that that does have an impact on, on morale, first of all, with staff and that sort of thing. I think we'd like to avoid that if possible. But I guess my question is, is slightly different than that. If, if you know that we're sensitive to that, what difference does it make where the money comes from, in terms of its allocation?
Exactly. That's, that's, that's exactly true. So-
Well, I just wanna hear what he has to say about it.
Well, because the, the unassigned or undesigned revenue, our, our funds, it, it's there, it's money that's, that's, that is available for these types of projects, which are basically a reinvestment into the community. The sales tax, we factor that into our operating on how we provide that service to the community. And, and for me, you, you have dollars that, that are available to address some of the infrastructure needs that the community needs that have been identified, and I, I just think the rainy day is the rainy day. The, the purpose of, of that undesigned reserve was to help bridge the gap for a community to get to the point where hopefully economic situation turns around and, and, and that becomes less reliant on, on that. But right now, we have that, that, I call it your savings account. And I equate it similar to your home. You know the roof has to be replaced, you saved for it. What are you gonna, I mean, it's there. It needs to be replaced, make the repair. That's how I, I, I view it.
I, I would be very hesitant to instruct staff to go back and take another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of revenues when they're, when they're putting together their budget. But we've seen year after year when we've asked staff to take money out, that it's been primarily personnel. And Jim, to your point, I agree with you, it has a morale effect. We've heard that, not just from our village manager, but also from our department heads in, in, in conversations. The money either comes out of the bottom line or it comes out of above the line, but it's the same money. And I am not willing to ask Peter to go back and take almost a quarter, a third of a million dollars out of personnel right now. Especially when we've been levying this money and not spending it.
And it's not just personnel, it is services. I, I understand your point.
Well-
But what you're saying then is by taking it from the sales tax, I'm gonna be presenting to you a budget where I'm going to be telling the board that in order for it to be balanced, you have to touch that unassigned reserve. If that's the direction that, that the board wants to take, I mean, it, it, it's just as trustee Sussman, it's no different whether from up here or down here. The end result is to move forward, to provide the level of services that we provide, that money has to come from somewhere.
See, I think it does matter. And it matters because of, of the thematic difference you just made. I mean, and one of the things that, that, and going back to this transparency issue, I think for us to sit here and tell our residents that we have three point seven million dollars surplus is nonsense. I, I am, I am looking at a ten-year capital improvement plan that shows six million dollars. I'm looking at projected deficits of one point four million dollars. So the fact that over the last several years, we haven't made contributions to capital, we've deferred vehicles, we've deferred IMRF, we've deferred maintenance, you know, because we have basically gone to ground during this economic downturn, that is not something that can be sustained and still have a viable, well-maintained community. So this three point seven million dollars we're talking about is, is money that has been, that has been collected over decades. That is, and, and thematically, that money, exactly what our village manager's saying, should be used for investment in the village. The sales tax revenue is operational money. That's a, that's an operational stream that should be used for day-to-day operations. If we're talking about our capital needs, it seems to me the prudent thing to do is, is to expand on what trustee Valering said, is if we know that we have three million dollars, I mean, if you take the six million dollars capital plan that we've been presented, if you pull out the fire trucks, the ambulance, the, the things that have the twenty-year discounts, you know, that's about a three million dollar amount out of that six million. Now that is something that legitimately could be bonded. And we have that opportunity coming up in 2014 with the public works. That is a very clear, specific thing that we can take to our residents and say, here is a bond referendum that will not increase your taxes and is going to be used for public safety. So let's say in theory, we can set that part aside, and we can handle the, the fire trucks and, and the ambulance. We still have a three million dollar capital needs over the next ten years. If we want to be transparent, if we want to give our residents a real idea of what kind of money we actually have in unaside, we should set that, that aside to cover our capital needs. Now, if we are lucky enough going forward, that staff is able to generate even close to the kind of surpluses they have over the, over the last several years, that's great. Because as you've said over and over, Lonnie, you know, these transfers can go both ways. But at least we have shown our residents that our capital needs are now met for the next decade. We still have seven hundred thousand dollars in unassigned reserves. That to me makes sense. And then we leave, we leave the operational money the way the operational money has always been coming, and, and the sales tax being one of them. So that would be, that would be the route that I would take.
I'm sorry, did you say that you think that sales tax should be operation, should operations?
Sales tax is now included as part of the general fund.
Don't we fund the capital improvement plan through a non-home rule?
Non-home rule, yes, but that, but, but because the, because the staff is not using non-home rule sat, not home, non-home rule sales tax to do their budget projections for operations. What they, this hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar deficit they're projecting for next year, that is based on, that's assuming they get that two hundred and eighty thousand dollar sales tax. If they don't get that two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, now they're at four hundred and seventy thousand dollars deficit. And where's that supposed to come from?
Peter's brought us back to the beginning, where we're all the time, which is, we don't have a dedicated capital, a source for capital. And we all know that. The suggestion which you brought up, which is contained in staff's memo as a suggestion to use sales tax, is just increasing the stress on the general fund. We all know that, so we're back to the beginning. So what I've, what, what, what I'm hearing here is let, let the general fund be, don't be pulling revenue out of there dedicated to capital because it's put too much stress on budgeting and staff and so forth. Present the capital needs to the, to us in our budget in the fall, and we'll decide how much of unassigned reserves to allocate to it at that point in time, which is what you always do if a roof is gonna cave in. It, you, we're giving the impression to our residents that if a roof is caving in, we're gonna say, too bad. Well, no, we're not. I mean, that's the reason you have the savings account. You make that decision at the time. So I would say, to, to move on with this discussion, if, if we're agreeable at this point, is let's not dedicate a general fund revenue source to capital. That puts too much stress on, stress on budget. And let, let the village manager and, and staff present to us in the fall their capital needs as part of our budget meetings, and we'll decide at that point. You have a reserve to, to use, and you're right.
And I, 'cause I, 'cause I was thinking about that, that option as well. And, and, and what, when I go back and forth with it in my mind, what I, 'cause that's certainly one option, is to do this a year at a time. You know, we, we go a year at a time, and then, and every year we take a certain amount out of unassigned reserves and apply it to the capital. But, and, but the reason, I guess, I offer it the other way is since we have, you know, a designated capital plan that's been put together by our staff, doesn't it make more sense to, and maybe you don't do it for ten years, I mean, maybe there's some middle ground, and maybe you don't move the entire three million over. But does it make sense to do it for a multiple-year period of time so that, I mean, the thing that I am, I am most concerned about, in addition to actually funding the capital, is giving, giving the correct impression to our residents of how much money we actually have. And as long as, as long as that, as long as money that we know is going to be needed for capital is sitting in this unassigned reserve, I think that gives, I think that gives a false impression to our residents.
So your suggestion would be to consider not looking at capital on a one-year basis?
Correct.
Okay, so I, everybody understand that? So that's a suggestion. I, I had a suggestion, look at it on a one-year basis.
And I, and I'm not sure-
I don't know that we need to, you need to resolve, we don't need that resolved tonight. You just need to resolve that there is no dedicated source coming out of the general fund.
Correct, and it sounds like the guidance has been to prioritize 2013 and present-
Anybody wanna speak up in support of deferring, taking the sales tax out of the general fund and dedicating it to capital? All right, you, you spoke already, but let's, anybody else?
No, but I would agree with Ben, that I think for planning purposes, we should do multi-year, a multi-year capital plan.
I think that's, that will have to have that discussion, but I don't think tonight's not the time we'll have to do it.
Tonight, we're, we're not doing it?
Well, I, given that-
Oh, yeah, I know that, too.
We have, they're looking for direction to prepare the budget, so we've just given them direction.
To prioritize 2013.
Don't use sales tax as capital.
So that's, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes, that's what she's looking for.
Prioritize 2013.
Okay, all right.
I didn't know that, to make sure she was getting what she needed.
But this, before we lose that point, though, when are we gonna have that in discussion?
Ask, ask staff. When the, when the capital, when, when we're looking at the capital budget.
Isn't that what we're, oh, so you-
No, this is, no, we're not looking, this is, we're just trying to-
This is the framework.
Right.
Then we can have it when we consider that.
But the most important thing is the prioritization.
So, excuse me?
The most important thing is the prioritization.
That's what I'm asking.
And I think that's-
Prioritizes, not not-
Prioritizes, not just the general fund.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. So we got that. Trustee Sachi, you want to continue?
Okay.
Can I just ask one, on that point to, to, to Peter? Just so I'm clear on the list we have. I mean, this, the CIP that we have, I mean, you have gone through this with staff. I mean, this is what you and staff are recommending to us.
It's, we went through it. Staff has, has identified the items that they would like to be included in, in the fiscal year 2013 budget. I have not had an opportunity to, to sit with each department head to review each item to really provide me a justification as to why it should be listed in here. I can't say that a majority of them I agree with. There's maybe one or two where I have questions that I, the department head still needs to provide me justification for, but a majority of the items in, that are presented here in the 2013 are what I would say are important and should be included in, in, in the next fiscal.
And actually, if you go back to last year's capital plan, there aren't very many new ones in there.
No.
It's stuff that we've talked about already.
But if, but if, if we're going to have this discussion at the next meeting about multi-year, I mean, I, I would like to be confident that, that the 10 years' worth of projects that we're looking at are projects that you have gone through and.
Oh, what's, what appears in the 10-year plan is, 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 I, I agree, should be included in the 10-year plan. It's just a matter of certain projects that are in 2013, can they be, can we hold off a year?
But I guess my point is this is not some kind of wish list. I mean, this, this is, this is a list that's been put together by staff about what we need.
It's a look ahead, is what it is.
It, it is a look ahead. Are there certain items in here that are, are, are wants? Yes, but some of those wants are needed for us to provide the services.
Okay. Trustee Sachi shall now continue with the points to give staff direction for the 2013 budget.
Okay. So the first item up on the screen is whether or not staff is to present a balanced budget for our consideration this fall. My recommendation is that they do that. Give us a balanced budget.
Anybody disagree? Okay, next.
Can I just say something? My only concern about that, and I, Jim, I, I agree with you that it's, it's, can be demoralizing, is that by presenting a balanced budget, we don't really know what we're giving up. And that, that's, I'd like to just balance that to ask Peter if there's a way to still talk about what the budget would have looked like if it weren't a balanced budget.
I think he does. I think he does that. Yeah. I get the sense, we always, we say, okay.
Well, I'm uncertain that's what he's going to do.
Cause if we put X, if we want to put X back in, here's a service level cut.
Do you anticipate, Peter or Jessica, that that's the way the budget's going to be done? I didn't think that's what you meant by.
Yeah, because right now the, the plan is that we're 200,000 in the negative, so.
Just based on the assumption. So, so, but, but will you be presenting what?
Yes, I will tell you.
What we have to forego with capital management budget?
Yes.
So in other words, we're not changing the process at all?
No, because last year the board asked for a balanced budget as well.
Okay, so we're still going to get what?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're not doing it.
Trustee Sachi?
Okay. The second item is, does the board want to use any of the surplus from fiscal year 2011 for the fiscal year 2013 budget?
And I would say like, based on your discussion earlier, you, you want me to bring back?
I want you, I want you to bring us back a, a budget where revenue equals expenses without using that surplus for this year, yes.
Next.
And so what, well, not, not next. So where do you, where, so where's the surplus go? Does it, it goes to unassigned?
That's what will get discussed at our 2013 budget meeting, whether you want to contribute some of the surplus to add services back in or whether you want to use that surplus to put the roof on the building.
Why, why don't we provide that direction now? I guess I.
Because staff has asked us for this direction so they can move forward to 2013 budget. We weren't asked, this is not the budget meeting where we're going through each individual item that's been requested. I mean, so I mean, that's just what staff has asked us to do.
No, I, I take your point, Gene. I think we have to see holistically what is it.
We could have the budget meeting today, but that wasn't the point.
Yeah, no, I understand.
My point was, my point was if we're going to push them towards capital or towards operating, we need to kind of see that holistically. We need to know what our options are in terms of that. Your question was where do we know, or if we're, if we're going to do that, how do we know where the budget, where the money can go, correct?
Yeah, I guess, what's the difference between number one and number two?
They, they go, they, they go in hand and hand with each other.
Same question, right?
I think there's a question.
Okay, I just wanted to, is there a, is there a difference?
The unassigned includes prior fiscal years, whereas.
Oh, the surplus, the one-year surplus.
Or 2011.
Okay. The next item is should the police pension levy increase to 614,098 dollars as recommended by the village actuary based on previous rate of return and salary adjustment assumptions? And I would, I would say yes, it should. I don't think we should change that, change those assumptions unless, does anyone feel differently? I'm sure you do, Gene.
Any comments here? Otherwise he has proposed leaving the budget at the.
I mean, I agree. I agree, but the only thing that I, I guess diserves me about it is we saw the chart, you know, and, and so, you know, this notion that we're, that we're going to have 7.75 return is just, is pie in the sky. This is exactly what's gotten the state into the problem that it's in. And we're, and we're contributing to it by following the same kind of.
I, I asked Jessica what, what she, what rate of, she assumed and, and Jessica, I believe you said it was at 1.5 on the.
With regard, that is with regard to the personnel expenses.
Yeah.
Not the return. I'm talking the return.
But obviously that's subject to union contracts and things of that sort. So that for the financial forecast purposes, we take a flat 1.5%.
And we certainly haven't been making 7.5% off of the police pension fund.
And I think, and I think you said for every quarter percent, we reduce the assumption on the return, it would be $30,000.
It would be an additional $30,000, but we also have to remember that despite we, us having a high rate of return, our annual increase with regard to salaries is somewhat high. I believe it is 4% or 4.5%. And so in that respect, with the exclusion of last fiscal year, with that addition of another officer, it, it essentially somewhat decreases it by default essentially.
But only a couple, a couple percentage points.
Correct.
Did we not last year reduce the assumed rate of return on the pension fund?
Yes, we did.
So we, we, we've made.
Five quarter percent.
Well, but.
And we were encouraged not to take a big jump.
Right, so. I guess, I guess I just like, I always remind people that it's an abstraction.
It sure is, but.
It's an abstraction? No, but we're not making 7.75.
And whether or not the board chooses to do so, you could also have the option of doing the 614 and then decide at the end fiscal year if we're running a surplus to kick in an additional contribution. So you're not changing your actuarial assumptions, but in effect, you're still contributing that, those additional dollars.
Well, I'll say, Lonnie, it may surprise you, that if we're not changing our actuarial assumptions, we probably should, but if we're not, then we should pay what the actuary is recommending.
Any disagreeing with that? No? Okay.
Okay. Next item is will the village be funding IMRF at the phase-in rate or at the actuarially required rate? And we, I think we used a phase-in rate the last couple of years. I would recommend that we continue to do so. I know you're going to disagree with me, Gene.
Any comment?
Yeah, Lonnie and I just had lunch and talked about this.
We talked about all this.
It was a long lunch and we weren't kicked out of the restaurant, so you know. I, I disagree with that. I think by not, and I recognize with all due respect that you recommended that we go with a phase-in rate. However, what we see from the numbers is that, that the, the growth just, we, we can, we're going to have to continue to pay catch-up. We're going to be paying interest on more money by paying the.
The 7%.
By paying the, the lower amount and that at some point, we're going to have to play catch-up.
Different to, not that much?
It's not that much. And I want to make the comment that my, my colleague, Mr. Sachi, has frequently said that we retain the option if we have a surplus of putting more money in at the end of the year.
We always have, yeah.
And when I said we, and, but we haven't done it. So I understand.
I didn't say I was for it. I said we have the option.
Lonnie, unless you're going to buy me lunch right now, this is what we talked about. So, so we retain the option, but we've never used that option despite having a surplus. So in effect, our cost of carry is increasing. Our cost of, our, our, our interest rates are going up and we're following, falling farther and farther behind.
For not that much money.
For not that much money. And so, you know, I know my, my colleague Lonnie thinks that perhaps this whole system has to change dramatically. It's going to implode, but there's certainly from the last, the session, the state, the session that ended yesterday, there is no sign of change.
No. So it's going to, so eventually it'll implode and then, and then let the state take it all over, which is what.
That's, I'm sure our employees really want to hear that. I think that that's really a strong.
That's where it's heading and if I were the employees, I'd be pressuring my state legislators to reform it.
Well, they're not reforming it right now. We owe the money. We're going, we're compounding the error. We're compounding the amount we have to pay on what we owe.
And we're paying interest on that account.
How much, how much interest do we pay on what we defer?
7%.
And as of right now, we owe 110 grand.
And.
So that, so this, to put that in context, the interest we're paying on not paying our debt is a seasonal.
Is it what?
A seasonal.
Well, not only that, but we're paying more on interest than we're, than we receive by saving the money. We don't make 7.5%. So if we were to fund this by using even some of the money in reserves, we'd be coming out ahead.
Wait a second. Now, we can borrow money at about 2%, so why?
So then let's go out and borrow.
What is, what is the difference in the two rates, Jessica?
It's like 16, 18.
Yeah, it's not a lot of money. It's, when you contemplate just the general fund in, in and of it, just itself, it's approximately, I believe, 12,000, but I don't want to speak inadvertently.
While she's looking, see, this is my point. See that 110 that we owe, that's part of our 3.7 million surplus.
Hmm, only if you decide to do it that way.
Only if we decide to follow the law.
That 3.7 is very real, Ben, despite you thinking it's not there.
Wait, what is this?
The difference between the 2013 phase-in and the 2013 annually required contribution for just the general fund is approximately 12,000.
And, and if you think about.
And for the water sewer fund, it'd be what, about 8, 8,000?
And for the water sewer fund, it's 3.
How much?
3.
3. So 15.
Four, I'm sorry, four.
As much as it pains me, and look, I think we all agree that, that pension funds, not just in this state, but across the country have major issues. Illinois is not the only boat in this water. And as much as it pains me to put more money into a broken system, I would, I would be for going back to the, the full rate on this for this year.
Illinois is not the only boat in water, but it's the one we're thinking the best.
Oh, okay, that's good, good now. I don't know, well, I don't know about that. There's some other funds in Illinois.
I would like to say this, Mr. Shavitz, thank you.
I would agree.
So we have, anybody else want to weigh in?
I think for $12,000, we should go with the full rate.
And I, you know, it's hard to argue with that. I will argue with it, but I'm not going to protest it. I am not an advocate of pre-funding any of these pension plans. We chose last year to take what the state gave us on the police pension fund, which is to reduce the funding balance from 100% to 90% over the next four years. Okay? So that's, you know, we're, we're not being transparent. Well, I, I'm not, I'm not an advocate of taking our taxpayer dollars and committing it into pension plans that we don't have to at this point in time. A concept, a concept which has always been said at this point is I'll use cheaper money later on to catch up with what I need to. So that's just the way I feel about it now. I, I, I think we made a decision that we'll use, we'll change this year and go to the full funding rate for IMRF, right? Next.
Okay. And well, five, we pretty much discussed already.
Yes.
I'm going to go to six. Does the board want the E911 fund to pay a portion of the expense for the communication center? And what staff is recommending is that we do a 10% and which would cost, well, which would really put $40,000, a $40,000 expense, take it, would be taking it out of the general fund. So, I mean, yes, I would be, I would totally support doing that and go along with your recommendation of 10% on that.
It should be noted though, that if the board is in agreement with this, the E911 board would have to agree to the, to, to this as well.
Right.
Oh, so the E911, it's a board, not a commission?
It's a board.
Yeah.
And if they.
Same thing.
Doesn't that kind of go along with?
Right, but they can, they can, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
They, they control their own budget. In that sense, it's.
But that's, okay. All right. Well, opposed to, to our policy too, which is we use more locked-in or designated or, you know, funds first rather than undesignated. So it would make sense to at least try to do it.
Okay.
Okay. And then the next item is question seven. Does the village want to increase the current deductible for Irma, our insurance carrier? You know, right now we have a $2,500 deductible. If you look at the attached tables, in the last five years, if we had gone with a 10,000, we would have actually come out ahead in three of those years and we would have lost in two of those years. It's kind of a crapshoot. The, in, in totals, it's about, would have been about a $30,000 savings, which averages out to about 6,000 a year if we went to a 10,000. There are options to go to even higher deductible. I mean, I would, I personally would not be comfortable going above a 10,000 and I don't, I don't feel real strongly that we should even do that. I mean, I would recommend that however the discussion goes here, we either stay at the 2,500 or move to a 10,000.
It, it is just like trustee Sachi said, a gamble. You will have years where it'll pay off and then you'll have years where some of our claims are out-of-pocket costs because what that means is that it's similar to your auto insurance. If you have a $10,000 deductible, if, if someone hits a gas lamp right now, we can, we, we can submit that to Irma.
So don't change the.
Yeah.
So is there?
Go to Irma, don't let her guess like that.
So Jessica, how do other communities, what is typical for most communities?
A lot of them are moving to the higher deductible.
Going higher.
That's correct.
They're moving to the higher deductible for the same reason, they're deferring capital expenditures, for the same reason they're not fully funding pension plans, because they're trying to relieve stress on the general fund. And then you gamble for saving an average of $6,000 a year. You gamble that you'll have two claims over 10 grand and now you've, it's, I would opt, we've been operating on this basis so long, I would stay with the lower deductible, which is contrary to what I did on my own auto insurance, which we probably all did. But it's harder, I think, for staff when they're hit with bigger deductibles that they have to satisfy. So I'd stay with the same deductible.
I agree.
All right, next.
Okay. The next item, the eighth question, is, does the board wish to increase the kilowatt-hour utility tax rate? It would result in approximately $13,283 revenue increase and cost each household approximately $3.61.
And go to the general fund?
Yes.
Well, Joe.
Explain why you say that.
Well, Joe and Peter and staff worked very hard to get a good deal for residents for their electric rate. I think everyone should be seeing savings as of this bill in excess of $3.61 every year if we did our job right.
We'll be watching.
What's that?
I said, we'll be watching for it.
So I, I'd be open to, to that.
What I thought you were going to say, since you referenced Joe, I thought you were going to say to Joe, when we made this decision to aggregate, we considered doing this as a board, and as a board, we opted not to do this. So that's not a reason not to reassess it, but we already made this decision four months ago, or however many months ago.
And the residents should also know that the, the village has probably incurred a good portion of that in just legal fees and time and energy from our staff and our lawyers to, to, in order to get in this, this, this rate. So I, I would be in favor of this.
We're talking about, we're talking about literally, what, 30 cents a month?
A month.
Any, anybody else have a point of view? You guys disagree with what they're saying?
I wouldn't do it.
I, I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
One, two, three, four. Discussion's over, because you have four people who want to increase our residents' utility tax.
I want to know if Lonnie's in favor of it.
Now, now that everyone voted for it, I'm going to say no.
All right. We agree.
It took a while. All right. The last item here, it concerns ambulance fees. Does the board want to evaluate the ambulance, the ambulance transport fee?
Well, wait a second. When you say evaluate, so what are you really asking here?
To increase it, of course.
No, 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 that's not what it says. I just want to make sure.
Well, you want to, we can lower it too, yeah, but, okay. We, we did this two and a half years ago.
I guess, before we embark on doing the, the research and, and evaluation on fees, is this something that the board would be open to?
Okay, here's my question then. Do you feel that we're covering, adequately covering our costs for ambulance? Okay, then yes, I want to evaluate that.
Anybody disagree?
I would agree.
Isn't that, isn't that like the ultimate pay-for-you service?
So you would come back later in the year on this?
During the budget, we would be recommending what, what that increase should be.
Okay.
All right. Are there any other questions for Jessica this evening?
No, that is everything.
Jessica, great job so far. You're like, so are we like, you're one for, one down, six to go.
All right.
Great job.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question before we get to the, and I, and while Jessica's here? I mean, I, I know as of right now, we just have the one meeting scheduled for September. Given, I mean, are, are there things that we're going to need to talk about in September that might warrant?
Well, we typically have two meetings.
I think we're going to schedule September.
I thought we have, oh, you meant to warn me. Excuse me, I thought you meant the budget meetings.
I'm just asking whether staff thinks there's, are you need us for anything before?
I, I know that there is a trustee that has some time away scheduled. If the board would entertain, perhaps staff, I don't believe, with the expectation of November se, or, sorry, not November, September 17th, whether or not we can pull essentially the fundamentals needed to have a preliminary budget discussion together, whether or not the, the board wants to do, November 24th, obviously.
September 24th.
I keep saying November, I do apologize. Oh, my, it's, it's like, it's past my bedtime.
Do you think we could have a meeting at least that we could, you, where we could go through the, the stuff before the budget? And could we have, why are you shaking your head at me already?
Because I don't want another meeting.